That's closed. Greenland? Good evening. It's Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. It's 6:30 PM. This is the City of Franklin Common Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Here.
Alderman Assam.
Here.
Alderwoman Day is excused. Alderman Salus.
Here.
Alderman Craig.
Here. Excellent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move into the citizen comment period, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Milwaukee Police Officer Kendall Quarter, who was tragically gunned down and lost his life serving a community. So please, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. So next up, under citizen comment period, as I read this every meeting, City of Franklin Meeting Rules of Decorum for Attendees and Participants. For those attending City of Franklin meetings, respectful and orderly conduct is expected at all times. Disruptive or unrelated behavior, including but not limited to clapping, verbal disruptions, signs, and outbursts will not be tolerated. For those wishing to speak during citizen comment period at our meetings, approach the microphone when the chair opens the floor for citizen comments. Number two, state your name and address for the record. Number three, address your comments through the common council, board, commission, or committee only. Let me hear comments to three minutes or less on the timekeeper. Number five, no endorsements or electioneering are allowed. Number six, speakers shall refrain from presenting unduly repetitious, offensive, threatening, slanderous, defamatory, or obscene remarks. Number seven, persons wishing to speak as a spokesperson on behalf of a neighborhood, subdivision, homeowners, condominium, or business association or similar group with common interests shall demonstrate their qualifications to do so accordingly to the City of Franklin Resolution Number 2007-6227 before speaking on that body's behalf. Number eight, questions may be answered immediately by the chair or forward to city staff for a future reply in a timely manner. Those not adhering to these rules of decorum for attendees and participants will be asked to leave or be removed from the meeting if necessary. Hope we don't do that. So with that, citizen comment period is now open. Anybody wishing to speak, come forward to the podium. Bless you. State your name, address for the record.
First, I have to fix the mic so you can hear me.
Can you, Linda, can you tap it?
Okay, I'll try to speak very loudly, too. Linda Mathwig, 73, 21 Brun Drive. Good evening and hello to the residents who are watching at home. I've attended enough common council meetings to understand that an impactful agenda like tonight's is not unusual, especially given the timing during midsummer and on a holiday week when many residents are preparing for the Fourth of July or away on vacation. Once again, the council appears poised to vote on issues with substantial long-term implications. These decisions could affect every resident and potentially raise our city's tax burden. I urge the council to approach these matters with transparency and careful consideration. While there are several things I could comment on, I will focus my remarks on items G12 and 13, which directly affect me and my neighbors. This proposed development will impact not just the immediate area, but thousands of residents. I'm especially concerned about traffic at 76th and Rossin Avenue, which already sees significant congestion and safety challenges. Adding a high-density apartment complex would only intensify these problems. Beyond traffic, there are broader concerns, such as an increased demand on public school system, utility, and emergency services. The site also sits on an environmentally sensitive land, including wetlands and natural springs. Adding an extensive hardscape here risks the worsening of flooding that could create more harm than good. On behalf of many concerned neighbors, I'm compelled to voice disappointment in Alderman Salus. This development is in your district, and many of us feel left in the dark. There has been no communication with residents about this project's progress or revised plans. I strongly urge you to organize an open forum so residents can view the current plans and share their input. At a previous Plan Commission meeting, it was mentioned that this project may be seeking financial help from the City of Franklin to proceed. If this development is truly as promising as it's being described, why can't they secure private investments? Using public funds to sponsor a private development places unnecessary financial risk on taxpayers. That should not even be a consideration without full transparency and public justification. If I've misunderstood any aspect of these issues, it's likely due to the lack of openness by the common council. The use of closed sessions prevents citizens from participating in...
Three minutes, ma'am.
...I'm almost done, or understanding the reasoning behind the key decisions. Transparent governance and public engagement aren't optional. They are the foundation of public trust. I hope each of you will remember the responsibility you hold to the people who elected you. Your decisions tonight will not go unnoticed.
Good evening. My name is Vince Trippi, 6910 South Lover's Lane Road, Franklin, Wisconsin. And my interest lies in item D. We're talking about the police powers of starting a special assessment for the city water line that went through our properties up on the Fundage Road. And I was interested if any additional funding was investigated from the state or federal operations to cover some of those costs.
So, sir, what I'm going to say is, we were going to have a hearing on that, and then you can speak and ask those questions. Staff will write them down, and staff will respond at the end of that hearing.
So I'll come back up?
You could, or say it again, practice. It's good practice.
I'll come back up. Thank you.
Kurt Bolton, 8035 West Imperial Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin. Here to talk about item G8, which is the use of taxpayers' money to pay for a study that is caused by a problem by the owner of the rock. I don't agree with that. I don't understand why the taxes I paid should be used for this purposes. I've noticed some other things about the rock. I've noticed they've been giving dispensation to not follow bill adjournances regarding sound levels. I also see another item on the agenda where they haven't paid their financial obligations to the city on time, which is another thing that the citizens of Franklin are expected to do without any problems. I don't know if there's going to be any interest payments on that late payment. I certainly hope so, because if my payments are late to the City of Franklin, I have to pay interest. So I'm, just to make it short, I don't think it's right that I should be paying for this sound study. And I hope the other aldermen on this committee are able to, you know, if you've got a different look on it and you're able to make that claim and follow it up, I'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Oh, the tall guy.
Right.
Before I start, and I, well, I just, I have two questions for you, Mayor. Will you allow me to address the council on G11?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, because that'll affect what I'm going to say. And related, the Pelkey complaint, is that considered closed?
No.
The Pelkey complaint is not closed? You didn't release the records, or it's...
Well, we can discuss that part there, but I, from what I understand, from last, everything should have been open and to be released.
Well, that's what I meant by the, the whole process was closed and done with. Okay. Okay, Kristen Wellham, 3851 West College Avenue. And this is about accountability of G11. And so, good evening, council members. And I appreciate the council and the fact that I see some faces that really seem to want to do the right thing, so I really appreciate that. I'm here to speak again on the longstanding and serious process failure inherited from the previous administration, what I'm calling unfinished business number two. The first remains an unresolved 2018 District 3 land donation. But tonight, my focus speaks directly on fairness, transparency, and public trust. This issue relates to history and a needed process change citing Mr. Pelkey's complaint as an example, but there are other examples. The poorly-written, overly-reaching Code of Conduct adopted on August 2nd of 2022 under the Olson administration was supposed to ensure integrity, honesty, and fairness among city officials. Unfortunately, in both its drafting and application, it fell short. Efforts by myself and council member John, now the mayor, to work to correct its overreach, and our actions were often dismissed in the rush to adopt it. That history contains knowledge which will help you make informed decisions moving forward. As I presented to you earlier, in preparation to chair the council meeting for a citizen complaint, I emailed and phoned requesting relevant documents necessary to lead an informed and fair meeting for a complaint. My emails make clear that one critical document, a document, was not attached to my request and never provided to the council or in response to Mr. Pelkey's open records request, including to you in the compliance of your motion to provide all pertinent records for your review. Yet it was and continues to be withheld from open records, the past council as the client and the current council as the client. Why it matters, this missing document is important for a very specific reason. It outlines a predetermined process used to clear the former mayor of all eight allegations. It was sent to the special counsel investigative officer and became the basis for how the Olson complaint was to be dismissed. The number of opportunities for disclosure and review brings up more than just bureaucratic oversight. It results in a breach of public trust. It denied Mr. Pelkey due process. It denied the council, the client in this case, the ability to evaluate its own files and all the facts.
Three minutes.
And it sent a message that outcomes could be predetermined rather than arrived at through a council deliberation. The current council may not have created this problem, but you now have in a position to correct it. What defines leadership is how leadership responds. This must not happen again. This council appears to want better methods to handle concerns, and I have some suggestions for better accountability, but I will present them on G11.
Thank you. 3:30.
Dana Ginn, 9011 West Tathon Lane. I'm here to speak on item G11. I'm requesting clarification on the open records information and complaint handling. I'm requesting clarification on the open records report included on a recent agenda. Over 70 entries were marked with an asterisk with no explanation for what the asterisk was given anywhere in the report. I submitted open records requests asking specifically what this meeting was. The clerk informed me to listen to the meeting at the audio. There was no specific definition of the asterisk items, so I'm pleased asking, what is the definition of the asterisk items in the open records report from a previous meeting?
We'll address that when the item comes up.
Okay. From my review, nearly 90 pages were asterisk entries and do not appear to be valid open records requests. These were often personal emails not sent to the clerk and not requesting records. Including these in a formal open records report is concerning and gives the appearance of specific selective targeting. Other cities like the, like the city of New Berlin manage open records much more effectively and objectively. I encourage Franklin to review other municipality systems for complaints and open records processing for improvements in transparency and fairness. Now regarding citizen complaints, particularly about noise. In the past, the planning department has taken up to two weeks to review noise complaints, only to close them using flawed monitor data. The police department was instructed by city officials for several years to not even respond to noise complaints about the rock. And then there still appears to be a selective enforcement of laws going on. The noise complaints process is broken and fails residents, quality of life, to protect the quality of life of residents. In 2024, a resolution was stated that citizen complaints would be reviewed during special event approvals. Yet over 75 noise complaints filed about the umbrella bar last year were not provided to the council or the licensing committee. And this year, they allowed noise levels to be increased. This appears to be a deliberate decision to ignore the problems and side with the developer yet again and continue to harm the surrounding neighborhoods. There is no ethics board or code of conduct, so citizens have no clear path to raise concerns about procedural illegal violations made by the city. The online complaints submitted through the city online system include an action file number at the bottom of the form, but in over 10 years of me submitting complaints, I've never once received a response or a report or an action file. In summary, there's no accountability or transparency and no meaningful response to citizen complaints, at least not when it comes to the rock. This needs to change. And as far as item number G8 regarding the sound study, I fully support the funding of the sound study, obviously. This has been ongoing public nuisance. There's over 1,300 noise complaints filed about the rock, and this is a natural step to get this resolved. The developer committed to paying for the sound study and numerous documents and applications. It's included in the PDD. Just to be clear, they agreed to pay for it. And then item G13, the Poths Development. If there is going to be a discussion about public funding, I think that needs to be an open discussion.
Three minutes.
And then this relates to the creation of TID number five, which is the Rock Sports Complex. Obviously, the mismanagement of TIDS, public financing, such as being discussed with the Poths, can have a significant impact on surrounding neighborhoods and the financial integrity of the city. This needs to be scrutinized. Thank you.
Andy Pelkey, 9320 West Grandview Court. I'm just going to hand you a copy of what I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
So I would just like to make some comments about item G11. Shortly after filing a complaint with the city clerk addressed to the city council regarding what I believe was fraud in our city government, the city clerk sent an email, let me, let me clarify, former city clerk, right? I'm not talking about current one. The city clerk sent an email to all council members directing them not to discuss my complaint with anyone, including myself. Fifteen minutes after that gag order went out, the city clerk sent an email to Steve Olson and Peggy Stino that said, "It is done." As a result of this gag order, my own elected representative would not discuss my concern with me for fear of retaliation. How can a mayor tell members of the council they cannot speak to the very citizens they represent? Since that point, everything I have done as a citizen has been countered by those responsible, including the former city administrator, former mayor, and those who are loyal to him. The usual tactics were deployed. Disinformation was spread to discredit me. Facts were denied. Records were hidden, and processes were manipulated. A second complaint I filed against the former mayor and his city administrator for violating the city's brand-new Code of Conduct was handled no differently than my first. The former mayor and his cronies circled the wagons and pointed their rifles at me to shield those accused from accountability. I believe this all happened because my complaints had merit and the accused were high-ranking officials. Had my complaints been without merit, or the accused were low-ranking employees, my complaints would have been handled differently. The actions by Peggy Stino, Steve Olson, and those loyal to him to avoid accountability are considered by some to be normal behavior at the City of Franklin. It has, it has been this way for decades. Make no mistake, the city is already on a slippery slope that leads to big-city-type corruption. If you do nothing, some high-ranking officials will continue to put themselves before the interest of the citizens. They will find a way to justify their behavior and convince themselves that what they do is acceptable. I am asking you to treat this behavior as not acceptable. I'm asking you to act in the interest of all citizens as a whole while treating each citizen with equality. This will require that you verify the facts instead of just listening to stories and be willing to hold people accountable regardless of their rank. For the good of the city, I'm asking you to be tough but fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelkey. Anybody else? Mr. Dorson?
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, and City Attorney. My name is Don Dorson, 8593 West Lake Point Drive. I'm here tonight to, to learn more about item G11. I've got more questions than, than answers and comments, but the main question that I've got, that I'm hoping that we, that is addressed tonight when you address G11, is the, the reason why, as I understand it, the reason why some of the documents have been withheld from the open records request is under the guise of attorney-client privilege. As I understand it, that client is the former mayor. I'm very confused about how that all, all works out. How can the city attorney represent the city and represent the mayor as an individual client? Isn't this a major conflict of interest? Question the legality of that. So that is my basic question at, at tonight when you address G11. Please let us know, is this really attorney-client privilege, and how is that legal?
Mr. City Attorney?
City is the client. Common council is the primary decision-maker for and of the client.
Yeah.
Whether or not, and attorney-client privilege, that privilege, under the law for centuries, is to benefit the client. It's no individual officer where there was a matter that was attorney-client privileged. Record just gets released because that person's the longer an officer, and any decision through the years with regard to release of attorney-client privilege is up to the client, meaning the common council, for a city.
So if the city directs you, the council, this council directs you to release those documents as they are the client, why are those documents not being released? Or has the council not directed you to release those?
Council directed release only of records that were before the council at the time of the decision-making process.
Okay, so the answer would be then, if the council directs you tonight to release the records that have not been released, then they will be released?
If the council has reviewed the records proposed to be released.
Okay.
I'll be touching on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak before we go to round two?
It's not round two.
Anybody else wishing to speak before we go to round two? We've got a gentleman back there, please.
My name is Eli Gesavick. I live at 7518 Carter Circle North. I'm here because of points 12 and 13, Path General. Ian probably recognizes me because I recognize him. I was at the very first meeting on June 12th, 2023, and I've been at almost every Path General meeting since then. Obviously, things have changed dramatically. Why they're trying to cram so much into one limited area is beyond me. Obviously, they've run into some issues concerning that, and that's why originally they were going to start digging in 2024, and they haven't done anything yet. My, my guess is it's still, they're still having issues, and hopefully, if they somehow minimize what they plan on doing, it might be a little bit easier for them to proceed. And another issue that I have with them is, it's in my backyard. Literally, there's a six-foot fence that separates me and all the digging that they're going to do. I made the offer to Ian that he could buy my condo for a half million dollars. He still haven't, hasn't bought in that. It's available to anybody else here. But at the same time, I presume you all watch the news, and you've seen what's going on with the town square in Oak Creek. They can't fill any of their retail outlets anymore. They're empty. They can't fill their apartments. And then we're going to cram four apartment buildings, a hotel, and God knows what else into such a limited area? Simply doesn't make any sense. One last issue, please don't take any offense, but as a constituent, it angers me that you're always going into closed-session meetings concerning this. I'd like to know what's going on. It affects me directly, and nobody can tell me anything. Mayor, about two or three months ago, I asked you specifically. You said it was moving forward, but there were no specifics. This is now over two years, and still nothing. But yet, you have to go into closed-door session in order to resolve it. Why not do it so everybody can understand what you're doing, so we have some input? Thank you very much.
Sure. Why don't I address that concern? Because you've got Linda Mathwig that ran for alderwoman, who was being critical of the aldermen. And there's, with this project, there are a lot of moving parts. And when I say that, there's a lot of moving parts considering what the, the build is, the financial arm of this. There's a lot of moving parts that if we came out tomorrow and said, hey, this is what we're thinking we're going to do, that could change in a week. That's why the developer's here tonight. Developer's going to be discussing and giving an update. Okay, so that's a big deal. Now, when you say, why do we go in a closed session? Because we go in a closed session because we're negotiating upfront. And if we were to sit here and negotiate in front of the masses, you'll see a few of those, you know, low-life bloggers taking bits and pieces and trying to create more strife and roadblocks. So we're trying to do is work through this. And when someone comes up here and says, what she said basically is that we're, no, we're not hiding anything, but we're going to, we're all up here on the same page to do as best for the city, and that's two portions, A, with the developer, what they propose, what we can share and what they want to share, like we had those, how many town meetings that we had at the library? And then B, the financial component. What are they looking for? What is the city looking for? And how are we going to come together in the middle to make this what's best for the City of Franklin?
When would we have input on that?
Okay, so when are we going to know about it? Well, hopefully, we'll have something more after tonight, but I just said, the developer, the developer is coming tonight in open session, right? Good-looking man, Ian. And then we're going to be discussing things in closed session. And then when this comes forward, we're going to be discussing everything in open, what, what we can. But until we have a deal, nobody discusses financials in open session, sir. No.
No, no.
No, sir, we do not.
Gentlemen, can I add, can I add something?
Well, since you were attacked, yes, sir, you may. Can you please hit his button?
In fact, in fact, I'm planning to hold a neighborhood meeting very much next month. I was looking to see what happened tonight, the discussion with the developer. Whoever asks me, they know my phone number, I give them the information that I have so far. We do not have any agreement yet on anything. So, but next month, we will hold a meeting in the neighborhood and answer all the questions that you guys might have. But there is nothing, there is no decision made. There is no shady deals here. Everything will be wide open.
Thank you. Well-sated. Round two. Bring it home.
Curtis Bolton, 8035 West Appeal Drive. I just want to make a quick statement about item G11, where the issue of client attorney privileges came up. As I said at the last meeting, I believe these agreements, the client is going to be the City of Franklin, which is a nickname for the citizens of Franklin. So we are the client, myself, my neighbors, everybody else in this community is the client. As far as I know, no money comes out of the alderperson's pockets or the mayor's pockets to pay our city attorney. It comes out of the fund of money that I provide to the city. So I would respectfully say, the client is... So, I would respectfully say, the client is the citizens, not the common counsel, not the mayor. And I'm sure I'll have a legal opinion differing with that, but that's the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to bring this home? Maybe not yet?
I know the rules aren't normally to have it speak.
No, we don't, but we're making exceptions. This is it.
But to, as one alder, former alderperson, one of my favorite former alderpersons, I'd like to address his concern.
I know, alderwoman, I heard you say name and address four times. It's alderwoman. Well, I'm pleased to say it again.
3851 West College Avenue.
But let's bring this.
Yeah, okay.
Because you're being allowed to speak on the item.
I understand that.
Okay.
I didn't get to that point. I was just making the point about that, and I'll finish up. The client is supposed to be the counsel, not the former mayor, and it's not true that this, you up there don't help contribute to the taxes, because you all pay your taxes, so you're paying too. So, I want to make sure that was clear. But the point that Mr. Dorson doesn't know is there was a motion to table the action on the attorney-client privilege and to have all relevant records distributed to the common counsel. I don't know what you talk about in closed session. I don't know what all relevant records are, but if you don't mean all relevant records, that's the only way us as citizens can interpret the motion. So, it does say to distribute all relevant records, and I don't see any benefit on withholding records from the client. If the whole issue is to benefit the client, the client should have access to its own records. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak before we close it up? Going once, twice, we will close this in common period and move into mayoral announcements. And if the alderwoman would join me in the corner over here, and we'll have Henry and Ivan come up. Gentlemen, you've accomplished a lot. Come on right over here. Face out there. So, I'm going to be reading two proclamations that are very, very well-deserved and well-earned. And I'm going to read both of them in their entirety until I hold this one. Okay? So, first one is for Ivan. Ivan, raise your hand. Whereas the development of our youth, both boys and girls, is greatly enhanced by active participation in scouting, and whereas Ivan Vanir, by study, hard work, perseverance, has successfully progressed through various ranks in scouting, and whereas such dedication and perseverance has resulted in Ivan Vanir earning highest award in scouting that of Eagle Scout. And whereas Ivan Vanir is one of the few in this country earning his merit badge, and whereas Ivan Vanir's achievement has broadened his knowledge and experience, will help him in all his future endeavors, and whereas Ivan Vanir's parents, his scouting leaders, friends, and the community are proud of his achievement. Now, therefore I, Mayor John R. Nelson, present this certificate of achievement to Ivan Vanir on the occasion of him becoming an Eagle Scout, and ask all residents of Franklin to join me in congratulating Ivan Vanir on this outstanding achievement, dated this day, July 1st, 2025. And just take a look at that sash. That's, that's, when I went in scouting, I was right up to here. All right. Henry. Whereas the development of our youth, both boys and girls, is greatly enhanced by active participation in scouting, and whereas Henry Vanir, by study, hard work, and perseverance, has successfully progressed through various ranks in scouting, and whereas such dedication and perseverance has resulted in Henry Vanir earning the highest award in scouting that of Eagle Scout, and whereas Henry Vanir's achievement has broadened his knowledge and experience and will help him in all his future endeavors, and whereas Henry Vanir's parents, his scouting leaders, friends, and the community are part of his achievement. Now, therefore I, Mayor John R. Nelson, present this certificate of achievement to Henry Vanir on the occasion of him becoming an Eagle Scout, and ask all residents of Franklin to join me in congratulating Henry on his outstanding achievement, dated this day, July 1st, 2025. Gentlemen, you've got the floor. What'd you like to say? I mean, how was it easy? Was it tough? What was the biggest challenge? Or say something?
It's certainly difficult by such a testing. And out here, especially Mr. Don.
I decided to congratulate you each. I'm terribly proud of you and that is the dedication.
Absolutely. So, is there, Mr. Martinez, you know, for the Architectural Review Board, anybody here for the Architectural Review Board presentation of this? No? Okay, I will read this into record if, Mr. Martinez, you would simply accept this until we can get it to somebody there. "A proclamation in recognition of members of the Architectural Review Board. Whereas the Architectural Review Board was established in 2001 for the purpose of promoting compatible development, aesthetics, stability, or property values, and to prevent impairment or depreciation of existing developments. Whereas the Architectural Review Board currently consists of Donald Nirodi, Craig Marifka, David Shazinski, Jim Arnesson, Eric Henrichs, and Karen Merchant. Whereas the Architectural Review Board hears and decides applications for permission to erect, move, reconstruct, extend, alter, or change the exterior of residential structures. Whereas the Architectural Review Board step by, this board is no longer required after the adoption of the new Unified Development Ordinance. Whereas the Architectural Review Board members has served the city of Franklin. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, John R. Nelson, Mayor of the city of Franklin, Wisconsin, on behalf of all citizens of Franklin, the staff of city government, and all of those public officials and staff, present this proclamation to the members of the Architectural Review Board, thanking them for their service, presented to the Architectural Review Board this first day of July, 2025." Thank you for the efforts. Mayor Clements, were you the mayor in 2001 when this happened?
I was in 2001, yeah. So, we started the board, they've done a great job. Thank you for honoring them.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Martinez, that's for you. Well done. Okay, going to item C, approval of the minutes, regular common council meeting of June 17th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, say if a motion carries. Now, we're going to go into the hearing. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the hearing. We'll open the hearing. Someone wants to come and speak again? It's right down the same lines as citizen common period. Then after that, we'll discuss it as a council, and we move on from there. So, I will read the hearing notices hereby, given that the common counsel of the city of Franklin has declared its intention to exercise its police powers. Under section 66.0701, Wisconsin statutes and section 207-15, Franklin municipal code to levy special assessments for water main installation improvements in the found locations, the east frontage road of South Lover's Lane Road bounded by West Hurtah Place to the north and South Phyllis Lane to the south. Notice is hereby given further, excuse me, further given that the Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, 6:30 PM, the common counsel will be in session in their chambers at Franklin City Hall, 929 West Loomis Road, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132, to hear all persons interested, their agents or attorneys concerning the matter contained in the preliminary resolution and report, including proposed assessments. Now, who are you reading the hearing notice?
I'll show what you just read.
Well, it's now, I have to say, it's going to be open.
Yes.
I'm just looking at when we normally do plant commission on Thursday. Okay?
Okay.
So, what I'll do now, it is 7:11 PM. Anybody wishing to speak on item D, this hearing, and this hearing alone, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and the public hearing is now open at 7:11 PM. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Vince Trippi, 6910 South Lover's Lane Road, Franklin, Wisconsin. I'm one of the homes impacted by this proposed levy, and my question is, is there any other offsetting funds that could have been available or still may be available to offset the cost for these homes? And secondarily, we all have domestic wells at the properties that order that frontage road, and I was wondering what the plans are, if we're expected to abandon our wells according to state codes, or if we're going to be allowed to maintain those wells in perpetuity until we decide whether to abandon them or not. Thank you.
And then, at the preclusion, if you can answer them publicly, which would be great. If not, you'll get a call like tomorrow, the next day, but hopefully, everything can be answered today in this open forum, open session, because that's probably some of the same questions as we have up here at the council level.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? You have something to say, say louder, please.
Did you need a pen, Caitlin? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Why don't you scribe his questions? I believe the first one was, were the efforts exhausted to find grants or other public funding that would offset the cost of this? And then, number two was, what happens to the wells that are currently in operation? Is that accurate, sir? Yes, thank you. Sure. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this matter in this open hearing? Seeing nobody, 7:13 PM, we'll close the public hearing. Now, open up the questions from the council. Anybody? Well, then, I'll start. You guys can prepare yourselves. So, my question, it was similar to the gentleman's. Mine was about what happens to the wells, but if you want to answer both questions to the best of your ability, please do so.
Okay. My name is Caitlin McCovia. I am the acting assistant city engineer. As far as the first question goes, I was not in this role at the time that that was looked into, so I cannot comment on what was looked, as far as grants go, what was all looked into. I don't know. Any of you had anything on that?
Yeah, I can just state that, again, that was also prior to my time being here. However, I was aware that presented to the council at the time, since the beginning of this project and its inception, special assessment funding was talked about, and the remaining of the funds on the city side comes from the utility fund that does impact water rates.
Sorry, could you state that last part again, please?
I said, it does impact water rates.
Okay. So, I guess, going a few steps back, if you could, Caitlin, find out, I mean, that if things were exhausted, that we did give every opportunity, that's a big deal. And then, if you could now transition into that second part of the question, please.
Yeah. For the second part about what will happen to your existing wells, you are allowed to keep your existing well. There's not a requirement that you need to hook up to the city water. If you do decide to hook up to the city water, you can still keep your existing well for other uses, but it also needs to be inspected. If it does fail, you won't be allowed to drill a new well, is my understanding, and you will then hook up to the city water. But as far as if you have an existing well and it works perfectly fine, you're not required to hook up to the water main.
And I might be on the same path with you right now, so let's say I, the citizen does hook up to the city water, they can still remain, they can still have their well operational.
Correct. And I've heard people use it for outdoor gardening or watering plants, whatever you decide.
Because a few decades ago, there was an alderman in District 6 that, when we were looking to have a city water project go through, there was a lot of misinformation put out there that, well, you can't, you lose all access to your well, it's got to be capped off. That's not the case at all. That was a terrible, ugly lie and rumor. So, now, we are to where we're at with that part of it.
Correct.
Alderman Sullivan.
The question, if the citizen or the homeowner decided to continue to use their domestic well, do they still have the obligation to pay this assessment? Because that's not fair, like to force someone to pay for, you know, a service that they are asking for.
So, as part of this, there is a deferment option that they can apply for. That would be a 10-year deferment, or they wouldn't pay for the assessment until they either hooked up, I believe sold their property, or rezoned. Is that correct?
With the price, like, you know, the connection fee, is it a set price or is it going to change over time? Like, you know, someone made the payment today versus someone decided to make the connection 20 years down the road?
The assessment total does not change. At 10 years, if you did do the 10-year deferment, that total is still the total that you would start paying at 10 years, which is pretty nice, because there's no interest in those 10 years for these homeowners, but, yeah.
Neil? Anyone over here?
Jesse has.
Sorry. Mr. City Attorney?
Just for clarification.
Yep.
The 10-year is the limit. Whether you hook up or not, you still will be subject to having to pay the special.
Yes. Whichever comes first.
No later than 10 years.
Correct.
Whether you hook up.
Hook up, sell.
Even if you don't hook up.
Correct. 10 years, yes, would be when it would be required.
And at 10 years, with a deferment, that's when the standard interest rate of 6% starts.
After. After the 10 years, yes, you can, I believe, get a loan through the city, and it would be considered at 6%. You can pay that over 12 years. And again, after 10 years, that total that you see today is still the total at 10 years.
Right. Thank you.
So, Madam Director of Finance, could you give a recap, just so everybody's on the same page? So, you have 10 years before the assessment has to be paid, and then, from that point, you have 12 years, if you wish. I'm talking maximums. 12 years, however, that's when the 6% interest would kick in.
Yes, but the missing step is you have to apply with the city clerk's office in order to get the deferment. It's not an automatic. You have to apply. You can defer your payment up to 10 years. After 10 years, then the special assessment is tripped. You can either pay it upfront, or you can get on a city payment plan, which is up to 12 years. You will pay a 6% interest fee on that, and it is put on your property taxes.
You will pay a 6% interest fee on that, and it is put on your property taxes.
And there is a timeframe, I believe, to apply. 30 days of the mailing of the special assessment notice.
That's a very important, very important key. Mr. City Attorney, can you hit his button again?
Only that, that was, it is contained within what will be noticed, so, for the property owner's information. So in addition to hearing it at this meeting, it will be noticed.
Yeah, so after this meeting, the final resolution will be mailed to the seven properties, and that will be the conclusion, and then that would be their notice for the 30 days.
And it states the 30 days from receiving the notice to apply.
Correct, and there is a deferment application in the mailing notice.
Yes, we'll be sending that.
I didn't hear you, ma'am.
Yes, we'll be sending that.
Okay, so one of the things that, Mr. Craig in a second here, so we're going to have a recap when we're all done talking, because I want to make sure everybody's on board exactly what the options are. Mr. Craig, you've got the floor.
Thank you. One thing that I just want to just kind of explore real quick is you mentioned about if the well goes bad and there is no drilling to extend the well deeper or anything like that, or can someone want to continue, continue their well service by contracting, you know, a well service to get deeper into the aqua four or anything like that?
That would be something I'd have to look into. I don't know the exact limitations on, you know, if it goes bad, what that entails, on what they can actually do and can't do. So I'll have to look into that question and get back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pecorelli and Alderman, Alderman Ickman.
Yeah, so this predates me, you know, up here. So what was the, what was the rationale for this water main extension, begin with?
My understanding, again, yeah, predates me. So this is adjacent to the Lover's Lane project that was done past year now. And I believe these residents were surveyed on if they would like water or not. I think I included that in the council action sheet with the date. So they did get surveys. As far as the response goes, who voted yes, they would like water main, and who voted no, I don't have those numbers provided. And I believe since there was a yes, or I'm not exactly sure on how it planned out, but I think that was, this was the route to go by Glenn Beardsley, who was the sewer and water superintendent. Other than that, I don't have the background knowledge.
I didn't see the survey.
Um, and analysis.
What I think is a problem is that, I understand people are saying they haven't been here, now this is new, or we're asking the residents to take a big hit here on something, and I'm a little concerned that we don't have all of our ducks in a row. And what I think should happen is that this should be tabled to the next meeting, where we will have our ducks in a row, and all the information will be there. I see one neighbor out there, because I represented your district for six years, literally no idea that there was any sort of survey that was put out there. So I'd rather, you know, measure twice and cut once before we make a huge impact on neighbors financially, and we have everything in order. So whatever questions and concerns we have, we will get them to the assistant city engineer, and that I think is the most prudent way to move forward. And then we bring them back with the information. If, and if the surveys weren't sent out, and we don't have any proof that they were sent out, then we're going to, then I think it may be delayed until we find out, what, what do we have here? Were they sent out? What was their response? Whatever it is, we need to do it right, and that's our opportunity to do so right. Alderman Ickman.
Thank you, ma'am. That's what I was going to state is, without having the knowledge of the surveys, or having them within our packet, knowing when they went out, if they went out, who requested to have the water, who didn't, there's not enough to go off of to make an educated decision this evening. So I was also going to suggest that we do indeed table it. Although some are new, it is important, when time allows, and I appreciate that everyone is busy and has a full plate, that we have as much background knowledge presented to us as a council versus just saying this predates, this predates, this predates, because we have a record of this somewhere in the engineering department. So we'll just have to do a little bit more homework to have that information presented to council, so we can make educated decision. With that, I yield.
I got a question. Caitlin, do you have a business card on you?
Uh, I think so.
The, the goal would be to give it to that gentleman there, and if they want us to communicate, if we have got a couple of them, need more, this city will buy you five more, maybe six more. But give them to the citizens, neighbors, residents, so they can communicate their concerns with you in a timely fashion before we move forward with this. And I'm much appreciated. So Alderwoman, did you want to make a motion?
Are they to make a motion to table until, how much time are we looking to research the predating of employment for some, to look up the rec, past records? I don't know if they need a couple weeks, a month?
Yeah, my opinion, this is just my opinion to your motion, that the motion would be until the first meeting in August.
All right, I will make a motion to table this until the first meeting in August.
Madam Clerk, what's that date, please?
The August 5th.
Tuesday, August 5th?
Yes, that would be my motion, thank you.
I second. We have a first and a second. Well, Mr. City Attorney?
Just a factual question, looking at the action sheet, on June 3rd of this year, it's a month ago, the council approved the preliminary resolution. And you're not aware whether or not surveys were done prior there, too?
To the residents? I knew, surveys were done, yes. I had, well, I have it saved in the engineering drive that the survey, but I can't tell you if people responded. I don't have that on me, and if it was actually sent out.
It's in the packet?
Under analysis, second paragraph it talks about.
Does it have survey results?
I did not, no.
And I think.
And I referenced.
Or is that the June 3rd meeting?
No.
There's a, a start of the process, is the preliminary, preliminary resolution, and that's when those questions would be asked.
Just, which is fine, Counselor, thank you, but what we're going to do is we've got a motion, August 5th, we got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. You've got the floor.
I just had one question. Shirley, do you know if that affects, do we need to have another public hearing regarding?
Public hearing's been completed.
Okay. I didn't know if the timeline mattered.
But.
Okay. Right, that's why I wanted to.
If it has to come back to another public hearing, it's fine, but please give the residents that are here, that your business are for direct communication, so we can move forward with as much accurate information as possible. So thank you. Moving on to, let's see here, we have got a consent agenda. Organizational business, Easyn Edward, mayoral commission appointment, Lauren Rosso, 6801, West Pineberry Ridge, Alderman D5, library board, three-year term, expiring June 30th of 2025. Second, right? June 30th, 2025? We got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Feel free to. Oh, I'm right here. Down here, I'm in the front. It's a roll call.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye. Five ayes, no noes, one absent, motion carries. Now we'll go to, since we're, G1 has been held over to August 5th. G2, consent agenda. There is a little bit of an edit here for A as in Adam, under Alliance Wisconsin Youth Opium Settlement Dollars Agreement, subject to change of grant period timeframe. Is that correct, Director? Okay, other than that, the consent agenda stands. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
First, seconded by Alderman Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G3, a resolution to approve amendment 10 to task order number five, the amount of $20,000 to Rookert and Milky, Inc. Madam Director of Administration, anything on that? Is there anything on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
G3, anybody?
I do not.
Good. I think you're on.
I do not have any comments on this, but I understand, do you not have comments? City Attorney? Okay.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor.
Only that, I let the city engineer know, the certificate of insurance and the additional insured provision in the last page of the agreement amendment should clarify and state that the city is an additional insured for commercial, general liability, automobile liability, and umbrella coverage per the standard city contract form. And the provisions that state the city shall add, the city, the engineer and consultants to the city insurance policies should be deleted. In other words, the city is not going to insure those persons providing that work for the city, to the city. So could be a motion to approve, subject to the technical changes stated by the city attorney on the record.
Sounds awesome. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
I second. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G4, a resolution authorizing installation of a fence within the west 20-foot storm sewer easement upon Lot 45 in Pleasant View Reserve, being a subdivision of parts of the northeast 1/4 of the southeast 1/4 of Section 11, Township 5 North, Range 21 East, in the city of Franklin, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, address of 7548 South 50th Court, tax key number 7599045000.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Good. First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Going on to G5, a resolution authorizing installation of a fence with the east 30-foot water and sanitary easement upon Lot 3, Block 4 in Root River Heights, being a subdivision of parts of the northwest 1/4 of Section 14, Township 5 North, Range 21 East, in the city of Franklin, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, address of 7985 South 57th Street, tax key number 8060037000. Zero motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G6, a resolution authorizing certain officials to accept a revised conservation easement for and as part of the 2018 review and approval of a special use for the demolition of the existing Holquist Stone Office showroom and construction of an approximately 4,207 square foot replacement office showroom, and to allow changes to the outdoor landscaping showroom and off-street parking upon property located at 2875 West Ryan Road. Holquist Stone Company, Inc. is the applicant. Second. First and a second, Mr. City Attorney?
I thought the assistant city planner was going to be here, because I, over the weekend, let her know that this is simply a standard form conservation easement, however, as stated on the action sheet, there was previously a conservation easement adopted and was never recorded for some unknown reason, but it still exists, and I'm understanding it was executed, so it's a binding easement agreement between property owner and the city. So this conservation easement should specifically state, and I understand the intention to be, that this shall be in place of and replace the 20, or, you know, amend the 2018 conservation easement. So the motion would be to put a provision in the resolution clarifying that the conservation easement to be approved here under is an amendment to the easement approved, excuse me, by the council on November 13, 2018.
We can add that revision to the resolution.
So you concur, Mr., okay, good. Is there a motion on this, then? Okay, yeah, so the first and the second with that amendment, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G7, 2025 tobacco compliance results.
I'll make the motion to place the document in file.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second, there'll be some discussion here. Good evening and welcome, but it's, it's pretty quick here. Excellent job, by the way. I mean, excellent. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Can I take a minute?
I try. You, you can take a minute.
All right.
Excellent.
So I just want to touch on this a little bit, so the Health Department and Volition Franklin every year collaborate under the Wisconsin Wins Program, and so we work with youth in the community. We have them go in and attempt to purchase tobacco products at our tobacco stores in the city. So we're very excited to announce that this year we had 100% compliance rate. Very proud of all of the stores and all of the clerks for doing their proper training, checking IDs, and not selling to youth. Really great for helping us foster a healthier community, set positive examples, and set protective factors for our community. So we hope to come back next year with the exact same results and continue to work with the stores and clerks and place these prevention factors in place, so that we can continue to have a great youth outcome and have our stores protecting our youth. So just wanted to celebrate this achievement. We have some of our board members with us from Volition Franklin, staff from the Franklin Health Department, and are very excited of this achievement.
So the former mayor and municipal judge is, is guiding, the guiding light here?
One of them, yeah.
Is that why there's 100% compliance? Right, right? Well, 100% compliance is excellent. Thank you for all the work you're doing, that is absolutely outstanding. Very, very happy and very proud of your efforts.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had a first and a second to receive and place on file, and we already passed the motion, correct? Good. So now we are going to move, Officer, thank you, we're good. G8, in ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-2649, in ordinance adopting the 2025 annual budget for the general fund to provide additional administration appropriations to support the ballpark commons sound study. Do you want to start?
Yes, I was saying, I can just touch briefly on this. May 6, this was presented as an item, the JPM agreement, and it was noted that our fund balance policy does allow for us to use general fund dollars towards cap, one-time capital projects, and so there was a motion to move forward with this budget amendment, so I brought it forward tonight.
So we've got a few questions from members, I know I do. So Alderwoman, did you want to start?
Sure, ma'am, thank you. This is something that I personally have gone.
This is something that I personally have gone back and forth on, pros and cons, weighing the good with the bad on it. I have heard from several residents within the District 2 I represent, residents, several residents in District 5 as well, of why does our tax money have to pay for this? It doesn't have anything to do with some residents. They're not affected by the noise. They don't want to have to pay for this. I've had a lot of voiced people contact me directly. I've not had one person reach out to me personally on behalf of this. So it does really put me kind of in the middle, in a tough position. I also then look at it as well. There's streets being paved outside of my district and the residents I talked to in District 5 on the other side of the city that still your tax money is going towards, and it doesn't necessarily maybe benefit you if you don't take those streets every day. There's a water tower that was just built that doesn't benefit everyone within the city. However, your tax dollars are going to pay for that. The amount of Franklin Police Department time for the noise complaints, I just, I cannot fathom the amount of resources that we're using from our police department for noise complaints. When I sit there and watch the monitors every Saturday and see that they're in compliance, that they've not gone over. So the amount of time that it takes and the taxpayers that are paying for our resources for the Franklin PD, when I'd rather see those officers out pulling someone over for drunk driving, saving a life, speeding, the list goes on and on. I just don't understand why we continue to send the police out on each and every single call. I mean, it just personally blows me away. So then I look at it as well. If we do this study, will it free up our Franklin Police Department so they can respond to, per se, real calls, people that are in need, shoplifters, things going on, and undesirable areas in our city versus taking call after call for noise? I mean, it's, I don't know. I was raised to only call 911 or the non-emergency number for real emergencies, but that's just me. So with that, I'll yield for right now. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to address one of your statements right off the bat. We do not have any undesirable areas in the city of Franklin.
I apologize.
Nobody applauded to that. Okay.
Well, I meant any areas where things were going on at that time that were undesirable.
And one of the things that the alders up here that I do every Monday morning since the summer concert series started, I reach out to our planning manager and our chief of police, and I ask if there are any substantiated noise complaints over the past weekend. And every response I've gotten this year from the chief is that there were none. So there were complaints. Sure, there's complaints. But if they're investigated and unsubstantiated, doesn't matter if you want to throw an arbitrary huge crazy number out there of the amount of complaints that were filed. If they're unsubstantiated, and they've proven to be, we'll leave it at that. Mr. Salus.
In fact, we have a lot of challenges to deal with in the city here. And I want to make sure that we, this issue get done and we put it behind us. I do receive complaints here and there, and none of us should act as experts. So this study all about having someone who is an expert in the area to check the sound monitors, to make sure that the technology needed is there. If there is a recommendation to rectify certain situations here and there, so let us, let us spend the money. And this is for the well-being of the entire city and all residents because we, you know, we have our responsibility toward every single homeowners. If there is, if there is an issue that we should deal with it, and I strongly support spending the money on this study.
Alderman Ickman?
Thank you. Please correct me if I'm wrong in this. However, this was presented to the council back around 2021, where the developer was going to pay for the sound study, and the council and former administrator turned it down. And it wasn't coming out of city funds. It was coming out of the developer fund. We, not we, because there were different people up here, said, no, it's okay. We don't need it, when the developer was going to pay for it. The developer at one point was willing to pay for it. Now we're asking our taxpayers to pay for it. I'll yield.
Alderman Craig. No, Mr. City Attorney, then Alderman Craig.
I don't have any specific recollection of that, but what I heard was that the developer brought the study, or some attempt at a study, to the common council, and the common council said it was not sufficient. And that's what I heard is where it ended.
Alderman Craig.
Thank you. With the adopt, if this amendment to the budget goes through, does that mean that we are, in principle, have agreement in place with the developer? Because I don't want us to pass this and then, you know, as been discussed previously of where it's going to be not money well-spent. So is that going to be the case? Where, do we have access and all that with Ballpark Commons?
Madam Director of Administration?
There is an access agreement and then obviously the work with JPM agreement. And we are ironing out a few items on that. I'm looking to hopefully have that finalized by the end of this week so we can move forward with everything. And part of that access agreement would entail the developer to allow access to JPM.
And what would be, then, be the start date of where we can expect the beginning of data collection and possibly, and obviously, we don't have like a timeline as far as when a finished work product would be created for us, or at least to know when a start date would begin?
Well, we would like to start as soon as possible. I know that they would also like to start as soon as possible. It's just the going through the provisions and making sure we're all on the same page before we actually sign an agreement with them and the developer, and also obviously for the developer, not the developer, the consultant, to also make sure that they're comfortable with the agreement. So we've been going through those provisions. I am anticipating that we will come to a final agreement shortly. And my understanding is that JPM, the consultant, is looking to start as soon as possible as well. We're targeting a four-to-six-month total overall timeframe, the, from beginning to end.
So, I mean, just, just playing, doing the math in my head here, would then most of the data collection be done post-season for the milkmen? Or would this be something that, where we would not see, where they're not as active at the ballpark?
Yeah, so there are a number of events that obviously we would like to have studied. And those have obviously nothing to do with the ballpark. The ballpark, I cannot tell you what the season is. I've not paid attention, so I don't know how that would align. Obviously, we're looking at the summer months, and they absolutely want to be here for an event to make sure that they have that direct experience and can lend their expertise to their recommendations. I have no idea how that aligns with the Ballpark Commons milkmen season. Obviously, the goal is to be all-encompassing as much as possible.
One other, you know, kind of side note on this is that I am pleased to know that we were able to move and hold separate thoughts at the same time. That there were, there was a time where the developer sat at the table there and said that there was a time where he even acknowledged that the sound was way too loud. And yet it also was not a violation at that time. So two things can be true at the same time. It can be loud, and it cannot be a violation. At the same time, we can also say that things can be a violation without it breaking the, of the levels that we have set as a council. So just some food for thought. With that, I yield back. Thank you.
So to your point, Alderman, and I know that with this JPM coming in, some of the things that we voiced that we want to have addressed in the immediate meeting, the first is, are the sound monitors placed where they need to be placed to be accurate? Is the height accurate? We have a number of things about that and the accuracies to make sure that it's being captured to true and actual numbers. Because I've heard, you know, different things about the height. The height's too high. The height, you know, there's all these things that we want to get flushed out right away in the immediate because under the current ordinance and under the current special uses that they've gotten, they haven't been in violation. So according to where these monitors are placed, the location, the height. So, you know, would, could that change? Sure, it could change. I mean, we're putting and betting that JPM is going to come forth right away and make those initial determinations. They're going to help things progress properly. Go ahead, sir.
I completely agree. I think that having quality data is exceptionally important in this process and ensuring that we have good data and not anything that is skewed incorrectly, whether it is against the developer or for the developer. It needs to be true and honest data for all parties involved. So I completely agree with that point. Thank you.
Alderman Ickman?
Thank you, Mayor. This council has specifically requested that we have a legal binding contract in writing with the developer that will allow JPM to go on to their property. I don't feel comfortable approving this until we have this document that the council's been asking for because a promise and a handshake of, yeah, we'll let them versus what could come when it comes time for JPM to access their property could be completely different. Can I ask why when this council has requested this, that we don't have it yet? I know you said you're still working out the details, but I feel this should be tabled until we have that agreement from the developer saying, yes, he will allow JPM onto his property before we go ahead and spend this money. Because we could spend the money, and the developer could very easily say, no, this is my private property. He doesn't want to comply. Well, you hope that's not the case. But I have been asking, and I believe the rest of the council has been asking for something in writing from the developer saying, yes, if the city goes forward with this sound study, they will allow JPM onto their property. We can look at speakers, and we can look at noise monitors and everything off the property, but to do it accurately and the things that we need to be done, they're going to need to go on to the property.
Mr. City Attorney, then Madam Director of Administration.
This is funding item. There will be no JPM contract finalized, signed, without access agreement signed with and by developer. And that's the way it's been from day one.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
I can just say that a budget amendment and a, two, an amendment to the budget does not constitute funding going out. So, I mean, just having the appropriation there is what this is for tonight.
Okay.
If there's no contract and nothing gets paid, then it just goes back into the general fund at the end of the year.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you yield?
I do. Thank you.
Alderman Piccarelli?
So first off, I just state that I am supportive of funding this. And I would like to point out that the city, many, many years ago, established a TID district for this, right? So there is some impact from a city standpoint on this staying and being successful. So trying to get to a resolution, there is something here that we got to work towards. I mean, yes, I've only been up here for a shorter period of time, but this has been a topic that's pretty much almost on every council meeting. And prior to that, it's been discussed for many, many years. And honestly, we just got to get this resolved. So, yep, I'm very, very supportive of the one-time funding of this. I yield.
Okay. There's a motion presented here. Is there a motion on this?
I make the motion to approve.
We have a first and a second. This is a roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day? Excuse, sorry. Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
No.
Alderman Piccarelli?
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, one absent. Motion carries. G9, resolution authorize a financial services contract with Ellers and Associates to conduct an arbitrary review of the 2021 B bond issue. Who's taking this?
I will.
My readers back on. I try, I try.
Arbitrage.
I don't need my readers. Yeah, I do.
Yeah. So in 2021, the city took out a bond and a note, 2021A and 2021B. 2021A was for multiple capital projects, and those bonds have been spent within the 19 months, which is in compliance with the IRS. We have 12 months to spend, up to 24 months of spending with an exemption. In this case, two projects were for this bond, $3 million for the sanitary sewer lift station, and then $3.5 million for South Hickory Street and stormwater infrastructure in TID 8. Unfortunately, the sanitary sewer lift station project lasted a lot longer than anticipated and came in under the amount that we bonded for. So as the bond came in, we were paying 2% to 3% interest. However, we were exceeded in interest income at 4% to 5%. And so now the city is obligated and required to do arbitrage review. It's an extremely lengthy and complex process, arbitrage review. And so asking that the experts who have done this before in the past for us with our 2017 bond, that they do it again for us on this one.
All right. Thank you for clearing up the arbitrage review. Discussion, Mr. Piccarelli and Mr. City Attorney.
So let me try in layman terms for a second. So, and tell me if I'm correct on this. So essentially, what we're trying to, what you're trying to address here is we borrowed money at a lower rate than we're earning. So we got all that funds. We didn't spend them all. That whole time, we've been earning at a higher rate. And so there's tax implications possibly with that because we would have extra income out of this that we weren't supposed to be getting.
Correct, because we didn't spend it in the time period.
Yeah. And the arbitrage is essentially the difference between the two rates.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it's the money that is essentially, it's the review process of what is owed back to the IRS.
Thank you.
Show off. Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor?
Very, very minor technical points, just in the standard city form insurance provisions, what was left in, and there is a signature by one of the other parties. The instructions in parons that are italicized, must-have, general, commercial, must-have. Normally, we delete those for the final form. And also, the standard form has been updated, so it includes, maybe delivered electronically and signed electronically. And I don't know if this has already occurred on this one, but could add that in. And I believe that goes into the miscellaneous provisions, Number 11 section. So if anybody's interested, could just put on the motion at the end, subject to technical corrections to contract or the agreement content.
Alderman, do you have something?
My question, so this excess fund, was, is it like sitting in a bank? Like at a tied-up, like a deposit certificate, like to earn? Because, you know, the 2% and mentioned 4%. So what is the, where is this fund sitting?
So we do have investment accounts that the excess funding is sitting in right now, still earning 4% to 4.5%.
So basically, we have to pay the IRS the difference, the 2%?
The, Ellers will do the review to determine if there is any excess based on the amount of spending. Like I said, it's a very complex calculation and time that it takes them to figure out how much we've earned, how much we've spent, at what time did we trigger any sort of arbitrage? If we did, they did the review in 2019 for our 2017 bond, and it came back that we didn't owe any money back to the IRS. So I would obviously come back with an update after.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to add, the motion is presented to add with technical corrections by the city attorney?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
First and a second, is a roll call, please.
Alderman Piccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries. G10, in ordinance two, amend ordinance 2024-2649 in ordinance adopting the 2025 annual budget for the general funded transfer $17,050 of contingency appropriations to Fire Department Vehicle Maintenance to repair the ladder, truck, radiator and cooling system. Who is taking this? Madam Finance Director, you want to start? Assistant Chief, you going to go up here and get crazy?
I'll have the Assistant Chief make you come up.
Assistant Chief, good evening and welcome.
Hello?
So I know that we've gone back and forth on this a few times. So is there anything more you want to add to this before we go in?
Just want to add, I mean, obviously, our fleet is aging. Average life expectancy of a flare engine is 10 years, frontline 10 years reserve. And this apparatus was sitting at 25 years. Someone phrased to me that it's like a track star who went to coaching and now we're asking him to run the track again and perform at the top. And it can't. So this, this rig is still frontline. Also, what kind of added to the cost of this is that everything on air is custom at the time when it was, when it was made. And so it's not as simple as a car radiator putting it in. We essentially had to build, and a lot of the cost was due to labor. They essentially had to build a hoist to put this radiator in. Once I got the radiator in, then, I mean, it was recoiled and here we are. But it was expensive. The apparatus, like I said, is 25 years oldish. And here we are.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
One second.
So we've got a first and a second for the discussion. Alderman Craig?
Yeah, where is this unit in the timeline for replacement?
Actually, this is getting, this is going to be replaced with the new Quint that we.
The one that we.
Yeah, we have a new engine and a new ladder, a Quint coming. But we're still looking two to three years out it.
Very good, thank you.
So we have been a first and a second. This will be a roll call, please.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ipan.
Aye.
Alderman Peckerelli.
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you.
G11, council discussion on public complaint process and open records response execution. And we asked, and it's actually, former Alderwoman, please come up to the table and then we'll start this discussion. So I'll start. So this is, keeps going and going. And we're not, you know, we get, we get to a point that I believe that we are, we are good at, that we have been as transparent as possible. We've released as many records as, as asked. And then it, we find out that there's, that that all hasn't been released. And then we have to come back to square one, which I think is, it's ridiculous. Now, whether the request wasn't complete, whether the request was, however it was, I, I don't know. All I know is when this keeps coming back, my stance is the same. I have never faltered. I have never lost vision or focus. And I've said, release, release it now. I have an emails. Anybody wants to check my emails? It's, it's release, release, release. And I base that on because it is over. It has been concluded. And I stand before you, actually, I sit before you, but I would stand. And where people are asking, well, you know, you, you had records that were released? Yes, I did. I had zero control over once something is concluded, that things get released. Didn't you have an attorney? Yeah, we were union reps. Sure, we did. It's not attorney-client privilege because it's been released, because it's done. It's over. And yet we keep revisiting this and keep revisiting this. And in my opinion, we're looking, not, I'm not going to put any blame on anybody, but it just seems that it's looking for, can we get an excuse to not? Can we somehow reach for this crazy elevated pie in the sky? That's attorney-client privilege. And like a broken record, we keep returning back and discussing it, even though you're looking at somebody that once something is done, concluded, sustained, doesn't matter, it gets released. Alderwoman, good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, right into that, you got to get right in there.
Just think, Ben.
But just get close, karaoke.
I'm not that tall, so.
Pull it, Kristin, pull it closer to you, please.
All right, how's this? I'll just hold it. Okay, so this is the unfinished business number two, the presentation inherited process failure. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the short history that will highlight the inherited issue, the process problem, and give you an understanding of the need to call for an accountable framework. The previous code was poorly written. And I wish Alderman Day was here because she is the one who wants to bring it back. It was also very overreaching. Despite revisions, its flawed process and hidden agendas led to significant transparency and fairness issues, particularly in handling the complaint filed by Mr. Pelkey. He raised concerns about the assessment process, the former mayor's behavior and access to client documents. Specifically, this concern revolves around records and the mismanagement and unfair execution of the city's code of conduct, originally created and adopted under the former mayor and administrator in August of 2022. This code was intended, according to G8 on that agenda, to uphold integrity, honesty and fairness among city officials, but has failed in its implementation. My concern is if there's any future desires to try to have something in place, that the process of this, of a complaint that was allowed by law left me with great concern on how it was handled, beginning with inconsistencies and lack in transparency. And you should know the process failings to prevent this from happening again. The context of the concerns, most concerning to me was how Mr. Pelkey was treated. You heard from here tonight about how he was treated. I witnessed that. I had phone calls on that. I was told things that were pretty unbelievable and which I found out were unbelievable. When he tried to bring forward concerns about the assessment process, he was treated really poorly. The other thing is most concerning is the client documents. The keeping of the client's own information from themselves, even after copious opportunities. That is a concern. And I believe, because I'm the one who saw that document that keeps being withheld, that the reason why it's being withheld is because of the content that's in that document. Points of the code of conduct and history to create something better, don't let your tiredness of a topic prevent you from creating a plan to address the problem and the inefficiencies in the process. I realize it can be tiring to have a topic resurface often. This was the case with the code of conduct. Everyone was tired of working on it. It was obviously that it would be adopted out of that tiredness. And despite Councilmember Nelson and my many revision attempts, the evening's adopt it now push resulted in approval without addressing the major flaws in the document. The version passed was overreaching and poorly written. The poor foundation left holes leading to an ability to withhold information, which directly affected how Mr. Pelkey's complaint met with bias and prejudgment. Concerns remain about the accountability, preventing mismanagement and unfair execution of open records requests, complaints, and understanding flaws with the former mayor and the administrator's code of conduct. A process failure inherited from the pre-administration that I believe you need to work on. Knowledge can help you create something better. So accountability overview and why it matters. Unlike three earlier complaints, which was kept very secret, they were handled with full council involvement by the presentation of the process for discussion and consensus and vote. But this one, this complaint by Andy Pelkey, had inconsistencies and was opaquely handled. And the key evidence was withheld from both the council then, the council now, and the public. And the missing document was crafted and available to fit within the open records time line, timeline, but not shared with the council despite multiple opportunities. Concerns that should be addressed are the erosion of the public trust through the avoidance of the council's authority to oversee their own files, denial of the due process during a complaint, attorney-client privilege overuse with, that withholds records from the public and the client. Council actions for public trust. This mishandling exemplifies a deep process failure which denied Mr. Pelkey, the council and the public their rightful access to information. The way to resolve a problem is evaluate the matter and execute a plan of action. It's a matter of accountability, fairness and public trust, which leads me to urge the current council to, and I have six points here. Acknowledge past mishandling of the failure of the process and the failure of the process. Review the missing process document and my emails that took place while I was acting as the chair. Establish a clear, transparent and accountable framework for handling future complaints. Consider strongly a formal apology to Mr. Pelkey, who never received due process on his complaint. Prioritize accountability to citizens, not to individual officials. And improve your open records practices to prevent concealment and ensure compliance. As I said before, I know you weren't the council that created this problem, but you have the opportunity and responsibility to correct it. And I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Alderwoman Ipan.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to first start out by noting that what Mr. Pelkey read during Citizen Comment Period and what he handed out this evening in the second paragraph, as a result of this gag order, my own elected representative would not discuss my concern with me for further retaliation. I do believe what Mr. Pelkey meant to say was his former own elected representative. This all occurred before I was in office.
He is shaking his head yes in agreement? Or he's nodding off? Either way, we'll give him credit.
Because I've, I've had endless, endless hours. I don't even know if I could even possibly begin to add up the amount of hours of time I've spent talking with Mr. Pelkey. So for the record, I just wanted that to be clear. Mr. Pelkey and I have very good communication as I am his representative.
That's fair. Yes, ma'am, you do. Oh, you still have, we've got the floor.
I just wanted to say, former Alderwoman Wellham, what you read off with those six options, I wish you had copies of those to give to each of us. You have a copy for each of us to have?
No, I don't. I ran out of ink, actually, printing everything. And yeah, I figured, well, someone else can make copies since I'm not in office. I don't need to burn up any more paper and ink. So we have a copy of it.
Or we may, I may ask you later on to repeat those louder, slower and clearer. Thank you. I'll yield for now.
Mr. City Attorney, you want to turn his button on?
Your mention of, was it emails, records that weren't released?
He's speaking with you, Alderwoman.
Records that weren't released, were they emails between you and the City Attorney?
How is it relevant?
Well, you brought up attorney-client privilege. And if it's regarding complaint process, when you're the acting chair or whatever it was and you're asking the City Attorney questions, that's attorney-client privilege stuff.
And attorney-client privilege stuff was supposed to be what was left over. Now.
Time out. What do you mean by leftover?
Mr. Pelkey had several open records requests on this.
Had to go through all this again. Off the top of my head, the record request was dated November 21. It went to former clerk Castenson, I believe. And she responded to that complaint on December 2nd with the reasons therefore. And then records involving you serving as the acting chair were created after that. You can't request records in the future after the date of your request under Wisconsin open records law. So those would not have been in the realm of the request.
There was more than one request by Mr. Pelkey. And the council's motion, which I can only go by what it said, said all relevant records. Mine were relevant. However, let's just give you that fact that outside of whatever, the main smoking gun here and the problem with the document that didn't, wasn't released is this email right here dated October 7th. I'm pretty sure October comes before November. And everybody on this council got this document in their open records to review. But what they.
So it would be on a, in the city possession at the time?
It would have been in the city possession, yes.
Good, well, clerk's office did the search at the time.
Let me read email.
Well, if it's privileged and confidential, I suggest not.
It's you, this record was released. This is one of the documents that was released.
Okay, so it was released under the request. So why are you bringing it up as being a problem?
Well, I'll make my point. This record was forwarded to me as one of my emails, which this record is what let me know about the missing document that the council never saw. So.
Was part of the records released, Mr. Pelkey?
No, this email was released to Mr. Pelkey, yes. This email was released in the council packet. And when you see it, you will recognize it. Because not only was it released once, this paragraph in this email was released nine times. Nine times. But here's the important part of this. From Jesse to Paul Riley, privileged and confidential code of conduct outside council services, which I'm still trying to figure out if he was outside council services, because we had a conversation on that. And my conversation with you was if you were representing mayors and former mayors, and you said, no. You said, the City Attorney does not represent elected officials on code of conduct complaints. And I said, well, if the City Attorney, if you believe that, and you said, believe what? And I said, if the City Attorney doesn't represent elected officials during complaints, who does? And your response to me was, special counsel.
No.
That's, I wrote it down, I have it. So don't interrupt me, I'm not done making my point. Okay, so it's, it's unknown to me if he was outside council or investigative officer. Let's just go with investigative officer to move on. Per my call to you this morning, below is the link to the August 2nd council meeting agenda packet with the code of conduct redline approved version therein at item G8. Also attached is a copy of the complaint, which the clerk has determined is complete. And a copy of the correspondence regarding the council president administering the process. The main applicable provisions I read to you are in the last paragraph of 8A. When I got this, there was no attachment. When you know, when I asked for all the records so I could get up to speed to chair the meeting, because I was chairing in place of the previous Alderwoman. I was sent multiple documents, I was sent multiple emails, I was sent with attachments, without attachments, some attachments with links. And most of you know me, that I'm pretty thorough. And I like to read through everything. This was done pretty much at the last minute for me to prep for this. I had a library board meeting, a licensing meeting, and no real time to respond. And I asked. And I asked for the records to be released to me. This was one of them that was released to me. There was no attachment to it. You got no attachment. The attachment should have came with this. This is the attachment that lays out the process that the counsel never saw, never approved, never discussed, never voted on. Now, some of you were here when we did the previous complaints. And I, we seem to be stuck on moving forward on where to go. And I volunteered to write up several methods to handle those. And I allowed the counsel to pick from them, amend them, and come to a consensus on how we would handle those. No one Alderperson, counsel president or not, has the authority to make a decision for the counsel. And that's what happened. The counsel never got that document. And when the records were, the first set of records were released to Andy in this timeframe, they were told it was, couldn't have it, it's attorney-client privilege. So then you all suppose, you asked for all the relevant documents. All the relevant documents would have included the attachment to this that was in your packets nine times. It wasn't there. So I sat through all the emails that provided me in preparation for that meeting, and I printed them all off, and I read every one of them, and I looked for all of those. And when I didn't see the document, I called you. And I said, "All the documents aren't there." I have all, this whole transcript of what happened on this. And I asked for that document to presented to the common counsel. It was not presented to the common counsel. It should have been presented to the common counsel. They should have known. Mr. Pelkey was denied his due process. I don't care about going after people, I just want it right. Mr. Pelkey deserved due process. The counsel deserved to see their own documents. This counsel deserved to see what they asked for. They didn't get it. That document is still not out there. Has anyone seen it? Does anyone know what I'm talking about? Does anyone know when I say a copy of the correspondence regarding the counsel president administering the process, what that document said? You might want to get a look at that. So it was sent as privileged and confidential, it should have been in there, it was within the timeframe. The only reason that I know about that is because I asked for those documents and pushed for that. You did not want to give it to me. You eventually did because I said, "You need to give it to me." And so you sent it to me, and that's when I said, "Give it to the counsel." We were at the council, you were there. You, Michelle, were there. I asked the city attorney to give it to you. You never got it. So the continued withholding of this document, it wouldn't be so bad if it was a small mistake. But when it's over and over and over, and then you look at the content of the document, you say, "Aha. This is why it was done the way it was done."
Alderwoman, can you pause for a minute while this is the attorney responds?
Yeah.
When did you tell me this had to be released? Is that in your loud phone call to me about a week or two ago?
That is in my email to you that are on the city's drives.
When was that?
Outside the time period according to you, so you...
When was it?
Are you asking?
December 17th.
Oh, okay.
18th, now right around...
Those that I had to check on this, which were outside the request time.
My emails have nothing to do with being outside the request form, except that they show what's missing. The record itself was within the timeframe. The record that had the attachment with it is dated October 7th. Let me go through the timeline since this seems to be so difficult.
All right, so you said that some attachment was missing in...
There's a couple of them.
The 30 emails that I sent to you because you asked me for some assistance between December 17th and December 22 in the year 2022. The city attorney sent you 30 emails at your request because you were going to be the acting chair or whatever, and oh, the city attorney was hiding something from you? Please, tell the truth.
From the, not from me. You eventually gave it to me. You never gave it to the counsel. You never gave it to this counsel either. The fact that the document has still not been released...
Why was it going to the counsel? When was it supposed to go to the counsel? I don't remember the detail of what it was.
Somewhere here I have the entire timeframe on this.
And in terms of working for you with issues you wanted to work together on through the, what, 15, 16 years you were Alderperson, anybody provide more time of assistance to you within this...
That's irrelevant to the matter.
Well, I always try and help everybody as part of my job.
Well, you tried to help Olson just a little bit too much on this.
Well, I'll tell you what. I've been apolitical from day one and over the last time period. All I hear about is all of this favoritism, which has never occurred.
Do you have an objection to releasing the file?
What?
Do you have any objection to releasing the file?
I understood the file was attorney-client privileged, and the common counsel decides what, has to decide whether that gets released once through the years. I recall vaguely got permission from the counsel to go by Alderperson by Alderperson if they wanted something released or not, and that was done. However, this motion you talked about, relevant? Here's my recollection on that, and the clerk can correct me if she knows more detail. The subject matter of the request, the request was answered in December 2, 2022. Then it was brought back to the common counsel, I believe sometime last year, in July 2024 maybe. All the records were presented to the counsel.
Except that one.
Excuse me. Under the subject matter of a request to release, common counsel, I believe it was a unanimous vote, said no, no release. That was brought back to the counsel. No records were presented with it. That's where the motion came from, relevant records. Had to bring the records that were the subject of the request back.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, in your microphone, please, with a good voice.
I wasn't involved in that, nor did I pull the records. But the records that were brought to the July 1st, I think it was 2024 meeting, were requested to be brought back, which is what I brought back, exactly what was in the packet from the August, I mean, July 1st meeting. I don't know, I have an email here, and I'm not sure because this was done in closed session, so I can't talk about it. So I don't know if this is the email that you're talking about. But when I did another request, this email here did not come up with the original request. And the reason why did I talk to our RIT director is because nowhere in this email from this former Alderperson and the email, nor in her document that was attached, did she reference, I just don't know how much I can say because it was done in closed session. The judge, at least he worked on it, the company that he worked for, and that's what the open records request was about, communication between this judge. So I don't know if that's, I wasn't involved in that at that time, so I don't know, but I'm just saying that could be a reason why this was not there is because that name is not mentioned at all in these documents.
Counselor, you got the floor.
Just one point with regard to comments about the judge, independent counsel or whatever. This was just a check-around, okay, anybody have any recommendations? Not inside the city, but other attorneys that have been involved in such things. And the individual that was selected after trying to find somebody to do this investigator, independent counsel job, or the then code, was a court of appeals judge who just retired, and...
This is irrelevant.
I dare say that a circuit court judge who then became a court of appeals judge who back in 1990s was the...
It's not a point of order.
Back in the 1990s, was, I believe, the New Berlin city attorney. I dare say there was enough qualifications there and principle where there would not be violations of law involved in providing those services. And the individual has an independent company providing arbitration, et cetera, type services to this day. And these allegations of some law violations in this process are not true and not based in fact. And there was no trying to assist somebody or anything personally whatsoever, and never was and never will be to do it right under the law.
I think what you're trying to do is put a little spin that says that I'm thinking that he is not qualified or he did something wrong. This doesn't involve that. You went down a path that wasn't even necessary because I wasn't questioning him. All I'm questioning is why the attachment did not come with the email. That's all I'm questioning. It didn't come with my email when you sent it to me when I asked for it. When I finally got it, I asked you to give it to the counsel. You did not provide it to the counsel. When this counsel... Check my emails.
So why don't we pause for a second? Alderwoman Ikman, you've got the floor.
I personally feel it's getting a little out of hand. I, basically, black and white, as it was said earlier, that the city is the client to counsel. This is attorney-client privilege on something that is a closed case. All of our tax pay, whether they're paying taxes or any resident that lives within this city deserves transparency. They deserve records that are due to them. It's been no different than anything else in this city, so why is it just with this one particular case? Why can't we just have trust in the system, release everything that was asked to be released to Mr. Pelkey, whether it's Mr. Pelkey or any other resident, and be done with it? That simple. This back and forth banter isn't what those are here for tonight. It's not what those listening at home want. Can we just simply get this resolved, do the right thing, what is right within the city, release all of the records as counsel had requested, get Mr. Pelkey what he's looking for, and move forward and come up with a process moving forward to avoid a circus as such? I'll yield.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just trying to get the truth and the correct process on the record, and I have some points with regard to the action sheet. With simply release attorney-client privilege, attorney-client privilege records, following Wisconsin Public Records and Open Meetings Law. Sometimes I do double checks with persons who are very experienced in the legal subject matter. Again, double-checked with the Assistant Attorney General when this issue first re- arose a few months ago, who runs the Division of Open Government for the Department of Justice. Checked with him. No. Don't release open records just because a matter is closed, period. Can be 10, 20, 30 years down the line.
That's why the counsel voted on it.
Never heard of any policy statewide where there was release.
The client's privilege.
Hold on.
For the thoughts of a longtime top shelf, does nothing except open records and open meetings law, Assistant City Attorney. Do not release, do not release. Query at a weekly virtual municipal attorneys conference, League of Municipal Attorneys Institute. Anybody ever release attorney-client privilege records? The answer was no from all, and strong advice should always be given to your client to not release them. So that's just the way it is.
So I see you there, Alderwoman. So the city attorney still has the floor, and we're going to go back to former Alderwoman, and then over to Director of Administration.
I'm informing you what I should as a city attorney with regard to public records and attorney-client privilege.
And we know that the client can waive that. And the client is the counsel, and the client made the motion to waive the attorney-client privilege, even though you disagree. Now, what I want to know is does anyone up here wonder why you were given the email that I showed you in your record release nine times, but not the attachment? Does anyone up here have any curiosity on why you would get that released in your packets to review nine times, but the attachment, just one of several of the attachments, was eliminated? Just ask yourself that question. And the document just happens to be one that has the general findings, which says it's a City of Franklin response to the complaint by Andy Pelkey. It cannot be the City of Franklin's response because the counsel never saw it and never voted on it. That is why it's not attached to your stuff. And I've had about all I can take about the circular stuff. Just release it. Does the counsel want to see this and release it to Mr. Pelkey? It was attached to your stuff. He should have it. It should be released. No more arguments. Going about dates. If you really want to see something, look at the emails that I talked about between us and how I asked him, provide it, release it. There seems to be things that are missing. Those are the emails that lead you all down the path to this. It was a lack of due process for Andy Pelkey. That is my only point. Release the document. It was attached to the open records dated within the proper timeframe. It should have been attached to that email, and it wasn't.
Alderwoman Ikman, and back to City Attorney.
Mayor, I'd like to kind of look at this maybe as an educational learning process. What is the difference between this and back when attorney-client privilege was released from a case, and I believe both parties don't mind me mentioning their names, former Alderwoman Wellholm, Alderwoman Courtney Day? That was attorney-client privilege of a code of conduct complaint. Not only did that not once come to counsel for counsel's permission for it to be released, not once did my eyes see any of those documents. not once did my eyes see any of those documents and tell, oh, I opened up my phone and I happened to look at Facebook and there it is. Someone gave it to one of our local Franklin bloggers before counsel even saw it. Counsel didn't even vote to release those records. So I'm just trying to understand, as an alder, what is the difference between that versus what is the difference of this code of conduct? So if you can explain that, Jessie, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Per recollection, I wasn't involved in those. And there was some other counsel that was doing it.
What other counsel? I was on counsel.
Oh, attorney involved.
Okay.
Madam Director of Administration?
I'd just like to make a point of clarification that the other attorney involved is a labor attorney who is subcontracted by our contractor. So that person answers to you, you answer to the city. You should have been involved. And if you weren't, that's on you and that person.
City Labor Council?
Former City Labor Council.
Has nothing to do with the city attorney in terms of, that's a separate
It does when you involve them.
What, if HR, if on a complaint here, Employment Council for the city, which is a separate law firm, et cetera, should be involved? That somehow makes me responsible for them?
It's your subcontractor.
I say not. That would be wrong.
Alderwoman Ickman?
I think many inquiry minds, inquiry minds want to know, those here and throughout the city, what is this document that is so special that we have to be so secretive of to just release as a public record document to a resident of Franklin? And what is it that we're hiding? This is a closed matter. We shouldn't be hiding anything to any residents.
I'll ask you if you yield before I turn the floor over to the City.
I will yield now. I'm done with the floor currently. Thank you.
Counselor?
From what I'm getting here, I'm assuming that's one of the records the former clerk came up with that was within. But the attachment wasn't with it.
Yeah, I wasn't
So it was just overlooked there.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that whole thing when they asked.
Hold on a minute. Who's going to talk right now? Either the counsel or the clerk? Which is it?
Clerk.
Madam Clerk, you've got the floor.
When it went to the July meeting, we pulled out the stuff that was all attached.
Always use a date and a year, please.
July 1st of 2024. Karen had stuff attached, okay? There was some stuff that she had indicated that was attorney-client privilege. And when I have something that's attorney-client privilege, I've talked to the league. They say you need to consult your city attorney to see if it can be released, which is what I did. I went to Jessie and I said, these documents seem to be attorney-client privilege. Can they be released? Okay. He brought that to counsel, June 1st of 2024, and it was voted six to no not to release them. Okay, then it came back this year and it came back to counsel again. So I took that exact same packet that was put in the July 1st meeting and I put it in the packet, which you all looked at and which was released. I, all that stuff that was in there, I released. Okay, and then I was informed that there was something missing, which I don't, I didn't know what was missing. So that's what I came up with. And in searching, I've been trying, I've spent an enormous amount of hours searching for this document that I really didn't know what I was looking for. So I had our IT, like I just said a little bit ago, do a search on particular people's names. And this document came up. And I asked them why it did not come up in a search that was prior to that. And the only thing we could think of is the email and the attachment doesn't say anything about the requester requested things between Judge Paul Riley and Concurrent ADR LLC. So that is not mentioned anywhere in these documents. So that's the only reason why he could think of is why it did not come up.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I just wanted to state for the record that in the attorney-client privileged documents, I believe every single document that was in there also had its corresponding attachments, except for this one. And it was in there multiple times. This is extremely frustrating, both as a staff, as a staff member, also a public official and a resident. I have been extremely unhappy with all of the events that have taken place around this open records request. I have, I feel that there has been significant obstruction even after the counsel made their decision to release. There were conversations and obstructive behaviors and additional conversations to still yet prevent that. And this is very troublesome to me. We should all be bothered by that. We should all want to have every attachment that was part of this released and not withholding a document that I have seen. It's a draft report of the investigation prior to the investigation from the former president of counsel. That's concerning. That was a lack of due process. And I also provided copies of that at the July 2024 closed session. And it was acknowledged that it was not included in the packet at that time, nor was it ever included in the second phase of this and the, this year's item for closed session.
Yeah, I did not include that because that was not part of the original package. I did not.
I know. But, but I made this clear. And I believe everybody that was here, so some, two people, I made this very clear that this was exactly the issue, the problem, the document. I provided copies. So the fact that this just continues to be glossed over and there continues to be excuses is beyond, beyond frustrating, but it's also a huge, huge blow to our residents. We should be providing them with transparency. We should be providing them with the information that they request, in particular, when it is a closed item. I don't like the inconsistencies. It's really hard to, to operate when there's a certain set of rules for one thing and a certain set of rules for another. So this item is really about, we need to get this together. Our community deserves better. And we need to establish a transparent and independent process for, for resident complaints that provide accountability. We've got zero accountability here. And it's extremely, extremely detrimental to this community and our reputation. It's also detrimental to all of us.
So with the Alderwoman, and then back to Alderwoman Wilhelm.
I would like to move this along this evening. We have several other things on the agenda. As far as the counsel action requested on here, one, two, and three, I just wanted to share my personal experience with the city clerk in doing open records requests, whether someone agrees or not, I really don't care. I'm just sharing my personal experience. She does them in a timely and orderly manner. She's well organized. I have seen it. She has everything in an Excel spreadsheet. She does them in order as they come in, as an elected official, elected official. I am able to contact her at any time if my constituents or anyone calls me to request where in the process she is. She, without hesitation, pulls it up, lets me know. She lets residents know when there's a cost occurred. I mean, I, as far as a couple of these options on here for the counsel action, the process itself, I personally feel is well organized and well done. I don't like the amount of extreme hours she puts in it, nights, weekends, and so forth, so another subject. But I would like to move this forward in whichever way that is recommended. If we go with motion to direct option three, clarify the advisory limitations of legal counsel to prevent future instances where legal review delays or obstructs counsel-authorized administrative execution. I also do believe that the city clerk is doing her job as far as contacting the League of Municipalities. She's not an attorney. So getting that opinion is highly advisable, in my opinion. I'll yield with that, but I recommend making the motion for option three.
Mr. City Attorney?
What does option three mean? Clarify the advisory limitations of legal counsel? So when somebody might need some help or there might be something they not know, the city attorney should just keep his mouth shut and not advise them and do his job? Is that the, going to be the limitation? And it sounds as if this entire discussion is about some attachment to one of a gazillion records that did not get attached somehow and it was overlooked. And all of a sudden, that becomes some kind of plot source or whatever. There've been four rules of A1. Tell the truth. Care about the people. Work real hard. Make no mistakes. And in terms of working, we're all here to work together. By the people, for the people, and let's work together. And this action sheet shows up all of a sudden in the common counsel agenda packet. Oh. Potential legal interference. Did I interfere with you over your 15 or whatever years? Or did I do everything I could to help you?
Twenty eighteen land donation, still sitting on your desk.
That's right. One out of how many thousands of things that had to get done?
I was going to bet you were going to bring that up.
Yep. I would have seconded that.
And I provided more time and effort assisting former Alderman Wilhelm on, including before you were an alderperson when you were on a
Totally relevant to releasing this document.
At every natural resource.
Totally. All of this is irrelevant.
So we're going to bring it forward. Counsel, you've got the floor.
Put together true document for the public record with regard to the statements on here.
Mayor Nelson, you heard the city attorney say that now the document was somehow missed, or I can't remember his exact words. Overlooked.
It is.
So if that is true, then it should have gone with that.
Yes, that, that document, that attachment should have been in that packet, should have been reviewed.
So it now can be released? Does anyone have any objections to releasing the document because it was supposed to be what was somehow inadvertently missed?
That's not a motion.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Madam Clerk, back to Mr. City Attorney.
I just want to finish because if it was inadvertently missed, it was, he should have, it should already be released.
I agree with
So you don't need a spec, okay.
I agree with you, but Madam Clerk and City Attorney, we got to wrap it up.
What the prior clerks did, if there's an attorney-client privilege, the clerk is the one who puts the documents together and gives them to the city attorney to look at to see if they are attorney-client privilege. So if the clerk did not put that document in there, then he would not have reviewed it to release it. That's the only thing I can think of because this has been driving me crazy trying to find what document everyone is talking about.
I would really like to speak to that. Again, at our July 2024 meeting, I explicitly handed out the email and the attachment to the entire counsel. And I made it very known that that was the only item that was really being sought and the only one that appeared to be not part of it. It's really difficult to see these over, oversights come up over and over again and have information in your hands that show you that this was a document that was missed and then not have it provided during the course of the many conversations we have had about this item.
Alderwoman Ickman?
This is the council, want to go first? I'll go up.
Well, you had your hand up, so now you're to talk. You've got the floor.
He had this up before me. I'd like to retract my motion from three and go to one. Explore and return with potential procedural or ordinance revisions to formalize a fair, timely, and transparent administrative complaint process is clearly we need to spend more time on this. Can I also add to that motion and including releasing the attachment that Mr. Pelkey is looking for by no later than the end of business day tomorrow?
Mr. City Attorney?
With regard to the administrator's comment, pluralizing some things that have been overlooked.
There's a motion on the floor.
Hold on. City Attorney?
I'm relating this to the motion. I do not recall
You've got the floor, sir.
All misses of things here and there. This is extremely rare. And with regard to immediately returning that, since I didn't go back to a July 1 meeting when amongst 500 other things going on this year, to find something that was handed out at that meeting, I knew the clerk's office was going to provide the records. I would appreciate reviewing that just to double check, make sure that there is not some legal reason, because then the counsel should know. And everybody's laughing at a worker who wants to have his client do it right instead of not doing it right, potentially.
So with that said, hold on. With that said, counsel, to go back to Alderwoman Ickman, if what the counsel's adding, that would pretty much encompass if your motion was to say, cover points one, two, and three, and release that document tomorrow?
After
Does that make sense?
The attorney reviews it one more time.
Well, hold on. Sir?
As Alderwoman Ickman just said, that would work, just to make sure there's not some other reason for it other than it was simply overlooked.
Can I request, as Mr. Pelkey has waited far along for this, that he receives this by the end of business day tomorrow, please?
Unless there's an issue, legal issue, where it would have to come back to the counsel.
Then I request that if that is the case, that it comes back to the counsel at the next meeting.
Sure.
That's fair, but Alderwoman, so I'm going to ask you again, does it make sense that your motion encompass items one, two, and three? Because if you encompass all of those, I think that's the far net that captures everything.
Sure, Mayor.
Well, that's, that's what I would do. I mean, if I was sitting back over there in D6, that's exactly what I would do.
I went from three to one. I, I think that's fair. If it can encompass all three, I didn't think it could.
I, I believe it can encompass all three. Yeah, we, we're going to do some quick clarifications and we're going to bring it home. Madam Clerk?
Administrative complaint process. This is, was a code of conduct complaint. We don't have any, so are you talking? The complaint process?
It's in general. It's a general statement to look at it. Are we doing the most efficient ways? It was brought up by another citizen that other communities have other ways of doing things. We want to look, we, we're not, we're just keeping it over there, Madam Clerk. So, Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor. We want to bring this home.
Right. And just in terms of the complaint and everything on this action sheet, Madam Clerk, who handles complaints?
We do, the clerk's office. But complaints are different, completely different than open records.
Right. But it's on the action sheet. Does the city attorney participate in the complaint process?
Sometimes.
Very rarely. Only if something, if they're issued a citation and it goes to court, then Assistant City Attorney Boarda gets involved. Other than that, the city attorney is never.
However, he was involved in this code of conduct complaint.
Code of conduct complaint is different.
Right. But this is an ongoing complaint way past the code of conduct.
Yeah, so maybe we could order code of conduct.
Well, let's, no, you don't want to limit it. Want to keep it open.
Code of conduct is dead.
Okay. Hold on a minute. Before Mr. Pecorelli speaks, Kristin, you've got the floor.
I just have one more.
I wasn't done.
You weren't done? Okay, let's go back. Mr. City Attorney?
You want to keep item three in there, where legal review delays or obstructs counsel-authorized administrative execution? I dare say that is
Probably pull out that verbiage.
Without fact.
I started out with going with my motion to incorporate one, explore and return with potential procedural or ordinance revisions to formalize a fair, timely, and transparent administrative complaint process. I feel that covers enough of what we can bring back and what we're looking for if need be. And I'm not questioning the process. And I'm not questioning the process or how it's done. I covered that and my feelings and thoughts earlier.
Let me know when you yield, because I gotta go.
I'll yield, I just wanna move this along.
Well, we all wanna move it along, but we keep talking about the same thing. So now we're gonna be, before we go to Mr. Peccarelli, who's been patiently waiting, Kristin, then Mr. Peccarelli.
The client is the one who decides if the document's supposed to be released. The client is going to get more verbiage on why we can't release it? That's my concern. That is my concern. If the council, if the council knew that this was missing from, if they would have read it and as carefully as I did and saw it wasn't attached, and it should have been attached, then you should have already seen it, and there shouldn't be any additional review needed of this document. You already voted to release him. I just see this as just another step on another method where he's gonna call this person and call that and throw up another roadblock. Just release it.
I agree with you 1,000%. Mr. Peccarelli?
So, slightly different topic, but so the, I'm all for looking for efficiencies and relooking at process, right? And one and two really on here is looking at process and are there things we can be doing better? We've talked about efficiencies, that is not actually in here. I think that, that part of the fair, timely, and transparent, that should also be efficient. And I think that needs to be at the core of this too, because the other thing we gotta be careful of is making, making these processes so complex, they take so long to get through. So I don't have any problem with looking at one and two. I think, but again, it's reviewing what we do. The second part of this is, I get we're gonna review that and it's gonna come back here. I would also say we need something as to when it comes back. Just so we kinda tie, in my view, we should time box looking at this and see, is there anything we're finding or is there, we're just not finding anything? I don't think this is an open-ended, it shouldn't be open-ended item. And again, my view is, we're looking for where we can be better at, at doing this going forward. That, that's the intent. Or at least that's how I'm reading the intent.
You are reading it correctly, sir.
Yeah, I yield.
Madam Clerk?
There's a motion on the floor.
Hold on. Well, okay, then restate your motion, please, ma'am. I didn't think you knew it.
Exploring and return with potential procedure or ordinance revisions to formalize a fairly timely and transparent administrative complaint process.
And?
With legal counsel of review of the document to be released.
Well, because Mr. Peccarelli brought number two point as well. Continue, ma'am.
And if it shall need to be looked upon and counsel to return on the next meeting date.
Mr. City Attorney?
That's the motion, that's the motion.
I still don't understand, might need to be looked at again, but if this is how we can close this up tonight and be home by 2:00 AM, that's great.
Ever seen it with regard to what former Alderwoman Wilhelm said with, oh, it's gonna be all over the place and time consuming? I try and keep it as efficient as possible all the time, because there's never enough time to get all the work done. You know, what is it today again? Oh, we're in hour 14, we're straight.
But if it's simply just a simple missed accidental attachment, it should, it shouldn't take very long.
Correct.
It should be released and be done.
Release, that was the will of the council. That was the will of the council on, what was it, which date, 6352 or 20? I don't know. It was the will of the council to release all the records. And this is, we keep going back and forth, beating a dead horse, and I question why. I think all of us are sick and tired of dealing with this. We all want transparency, maybe. And I think that releasing what was missed has already been determined by the council, and it should be released without further delay. This is absolutely ridiculous.
Would you also consider the formal apology to Mr. Pelkey once you see that he didn't get due process? Please.
So Alderwoman, back to your motion. It's number one, and it's number one, right?
Okay.
And to release this document immediately upon final review, even though it should have been already done? I just wanna done it out. I mean, this is, it is ridiculous, and we're herding cats, and we're going back and back and back and back, and it looks terrible. Let's release it. The will of the council was to release it, so the will of the council should be and shall be followed.
That's what-
So if that's it, then that's it. It's the will of the council shall be followed. The fact that it somehow didn't appear in the last one? It's not the issue. I understand, Alderwoman, please.
I just wanted to add in that I requested for it to be sent to Mr. Pelkey no later than the end of the business day tomorrow, Wednesday, July 2nd.
So I'm handing something to the city council. So that's, that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, this is what it is.
Can you repeat that motion?
Oh.
It's number one, Alderman Salus on here. It's number one, and having this document reviewed for release as, for release as the will of the council, that's it. By end of business day tomorrow. Mr. City Attorney, we got a first and a second. Mr. City Attorney, you got the floor.
Okay, council members. If they're good with it, they're good with it.
Are you good with it, sir?
It is jumping out at me to state that somehow there would be some-
Delay?
Something outside of what it is that might have, for some reason, had it withheld under the law. Let me, give me a minute, one minute here, real quick.
We're gonna take a break right after this. Is the cold, is there ice cold?
I could give the client their own document.
Say that again?
I could give the client their own document.
These are viewing it, I anticipate that this is gonna be over in a minute.
Are we sure? Because nobody knows what he's looking at.
That's what I said.
Well, can you just please give him a moment?
To make sure.
We ask for respect, let's give the city council respect.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Attorney-client privilege. That's it, I'm not seeing any. And you released all the other attorney-client privileges.
Yeah, that was supposed to be with- So therefore, the motion told Mr. Pelkey she'll have this information a little later than, right now? It's a ridiculous amount of time to spend on this.
Yes.
Correct.
For all involved.
I didn't compare it word for word, but it appears to be the correct document.
Okay, so that's the correct document. We've got a first and a second, and that document will be released tomorrow by end of business day. Roll call, please.
Alderman Peccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nos, one absent, motion carries. At this point-
And that's unfinished business. Number one is still out there.
So once I get that done, I'm gonna go enjoy my life again, so I'll be waiting for that one.
And all of this could have been done very simply.
Could have.
Pick up, pick up the phone and tell you what it is.
All right, we are now going to take a recess before we go into item G12. Five minutes, please come back in five minutes. We're gonna start working our way off. Come back at 9:15, please, 9:15. Me either. It is now 9:18 PM. We are back in open session, item G12. Project update on potential residential commercial developments and proposals and potential developments, agreements in relation thereto for properties in the southeast corner area of South 76th Street and West Rossen Avenue, Post General LLC, Ian Martin, Land by Label. Mr. Martin, if you don't mind, are you coming up here now? That'd be great. Seat right up in front. There's two seats and two microphones. Two seats, two microphones. I like that. So, Mr. Martin, good evening and welcome. If you would please state your name and business address for the record. Madam Clerk, it is 9:19 PM. We were asking to come back at 9:15. If you put a watch in next year's budget. Do not blame former Alderwoman Wilhelm. Mr. Martin, yes, please use your name and business address for the record.
I am Ian Martin, founder, managing principal of Land by Label, 638 Milwaukee Street, Delafield, Wisconsin.
You got it for us, sir.
All right, so. All right, so it's been a while since we were here. Some of you have heard, have some familiarity with it, some of you don't. So I'm gonna follow a pretty quick, simple sort of format here. I'm gonna talk about kinda where we left off with the council in terms of what was approved, and then walk through our latest concept plan. And, and we can, you can interrupt, I'll answer questions as we go, or we can wait to the end, whatever, whatever you guys wanna do. One thing I should note here that I think, I'm not, as part of my presentation, gonna talk about things like traffic studies or, or the pros and cons of apartment units. This project, as you heard from some of the residents, had a pretty exhaustive public meetings, private meetings, lots of neighborhood meetings, and we vetted all those issues pretty thoroughly. So I'm not gonna talk about it, I'm happy to answer questions about it.
If we could hold it up until the end, because I'm sure Mr. Martin will cover a lot of things.
So just, just so we're familiar, this is the, the development's called Post General, that's what we've been calling it. This is the site we're talking about. It is currently the Orchard View Shopping Center and the vacant land behind it. So this is the in-place existing approvals that are from December of 2023. 426 apartment units, all contained in sort of the L-shaped buildings that were all three to four-story construction. There's a little variety there because of where the grade on the site sloped off in some spots. So up on 76th Street, which is on sort of the left side of the screen, we had a small boutique hotel, a music pavilion, and a food truck court. Included in the two mixed-use buildings sort of at the center of the site, so I don't know if you can see my cursor here, those were commercial spaces that are contained within the building. The square footage was gonna be somewhere between 15,000 to 20,000 square feet total in those buildings. And then Harry's Ace Hardware was on the plan. The plan then, as you'll see is today, is to keep Harry's there. I've met with him several times. We've gotta do some work to clean up the exterior of the store, but we've got money in the budget to do that, and he's expressed, along with his family, a desire to stay. So. So here's the current concept. And maybe just a quick note about how we got from, from the old one to the new one. And I mentioned there was, we had lots of meetings, some of you were at some of them, all of them. And, and even though what we, I walked you through what we got approved, I would say there was a couple of pretty clear takeaways the first time around. One was, and, and again, I'm not gonna dive into the, whether the market would support it or not, but there was just a general concern, I would say, about the number of units. We heard that from a lot of people. Reasonable minds can disagree on that, but again, any, anybody that sat in the meetings would agree, I think that was one of the takeaways we heard from the residents. I think one of the other ones we heard, and, and there's no, no more articulate voice for this than Eli, who's here, but he didn't like the height of the buildings because they were, you know, next to the, they were on the property line next to his condo, next, which is to the south, and then there were single-family homes to the east too. So that was the concern they expressed. Thank you, Mayor. So, so those were always in, sort of in our mind as we decided, you know, okay, how do we, how do we keep working on it? How do we make it better for everybody? So, so here's the current plan. It, it looks somewhat similar because you're looking at a two-dimensional site plan, but, but it is a, different in some important ways. So we have 312 units. Those 312 units are contained in a mixed-use, two mixed-use buildings, very similar to the, the prior plan, which you see right here. But then all of the, all the buildings on the perimeter here have been reduced to two-storied stacked flat buildings, so same size and scale of a house. And then we've added some townhome buildings as well, so Building J, Building K. Those are, are, you know, kind of nice townhome buildings meant to target empty nesters at a little higher price point than some of the other units. We don't have a lot of them on here, they comprise about 12 of the 312 units. The other, the other comment we heard from a number of people, I think, was maybe we hadn't done good enough to focus on the commercial use. Is there enough just straight-up dedicated commercial land as part of the project? I won't go into all the reasons why we thought a band show was a good idea and why we liked the idea of food trucks and the hotel, but nonetheless, that was a, a comment we got. So what we've done here, you'll see on 76th is, and for a minute, just don't pay too much attention to the, the specific boxes on the page, I'll walk you through various ideas we have. But the point here is that we're gonna dedicate that two-and-a-half acre parcel purely for commercial uses. And then, and then we've maintained, I think I mentioned, the, the mixed-use nature of the building here. We've got a food and beverage restaurant, couple groups have expressed interest in that. We have a wine bar. Doesn't do full food service, but, you know, think about wine, small retail use, snacks, that kind of thing. They're an existing operator with another location in the area and have a good, they're a good, successful business. And then, again, the Ace Hardware's here. So real quick, these are just images of, of what the mixed-use buildings, these may look familiar to you, this was always part of the plan. I'm sharing them here so you can see some of the street-level activation that that, that storefront creates. One of the original concepts here was how do you create a kind of a Main Street feel by pulling the commercial uses right up onto the edge of some of the new road network that was gonna go through it? The only difference with the new plan is rather than have a standalone clubhouse for our apartment residents at the far eastern side of the site, away from where all the activity was happening, we thought a better option would be to take that program and move it towards the, where all the activity is next to the commercial. So essentially, we've taken one of the commercial, call it boxes, in the storefront and turned it into, you know, think of a big volume fitness center, we'll have our leasing offices, resident lounge. We're doing things like golf simulators in some of our projects now, so that would be the space that kind of contains that. So this is just meant to show you, we've done a bunch of studies with our architect just to see like, what kind of retail could this space accommodate? just to see like, what kind of retail could this space accommodate? What type of square footages could we get? And, and so we don't have any deal, there's no deal signed up today, we don't have a specific user identified. So I'm really not trying to telegraph anything here other than taking the two-and-a-half acres and just treating it as a blank slate and saying, it could accommodate any kind of commercial, retail, food and beverage use. That's all I'm really trying to show here. In terms of the total square footage, you know, we think we could get up to thirty thousand square feet here potentially. You think about a lot of the, the sort of newer format bars and restaurants, a lot of them are two-story concepts, a lot of them have roof decks or mezzanine levels, that kind of thing. And so we think there's an opportunity to get up to thirty thousand square feet of, of commercial. It may be that when we look at it, we decide that maybe it's not about just getting more square footage and more focused on what's the right kind of, of commercial use here. And so you'll see some studies where this one over here would represent two standalone five thousand square foot rest, sit-down restaurants. And, and so I wanted to look at this one because the parking can get pretty intensive for those sort of uses. So again, it's, it's not that we have anybody lined up, just that we wanted to sort of see how much we could get in here. These are just some representative images showing the range of the kind of commercial we think we can achieve here. So it covers everything from, you know, what I would say is kind of traditional suburban retail. The image here in the lower left is actually more retail that's being built at Oak Creek, at Drexel Town Center. The, my favorite one here, and this would be one I'd, I'd really love to see materialize, this is a brewery in Iowa called Big Grove. I like it because it sits on about a two-and-a-half to three-acre site, they have an event venue as part of it, they have the brewing, but also the restaurant format, and then you can see they've done a really nice job activating the outdoor area. So again, something like that could, could fit on this site. Just some sample images of, when I say stacked flat and townhomes, what we're talking about. We haven't designed those for this particular project, so these are images of things we've done on other projects or, or images that we think are, are thoughtfully done that we could do here. So, so to summarize, we've got fewer apartments, about a hundred and fourteen fewer units, got smaller buildings on all the edges, we have the ability to deliver more commercial space. I say better commercial space because I think, I think the flexibility of having a vacant site on Seventy Sixth Street that's ready for development, the type of commercial you can use with that street frontage is a lot more varied than if it's incorporated in the ground floor of a mixed-use building that's tucked back inside the project. We still have that, too, but I'd like the flexibility that the Seventy Sixth Street frontage gives us. The trade-off on this was, we don't have a hotel, a band shell, or a food truck court anymore.
Could you stay there for just a second?
Yep.
So the number one, just to clarify it, that's a hundred and fourteen less.
Yes.
Including three hundred and eleven, twelve.
Yeah, so.
Just so when you see that, if I just walked in the room, I'd be like, oh, a hundred and fourteen, but it's not.
No, it's three hundred and twelve, which is a hundred and fourteen less than the existing approval.
I get that, I just want to do it. And then now, and now the big point, big point, it's two-story buildings.
Correct.
Huge thing.
On, on the perimeters, yes. The, the two buildings in the middle are still three-story, they're actually four-story buildings with the retail integrated into the ground floor with the parking.
But not the outer, the outer two.
That's, that's correct. Yep. One, so, so I mean, I, I'm, I'm really proud of myself, that's all I got, so I'm happy to answer questions for you guys, whatever, whatever you want to cover, we can cover.
So what we're going to do is go to Alderman Ikeman first.
I just want to start out by saying, again, from the comments that were made in Citizen Comment Period, this is the first time this has been brought in front of us in a long, in a long time. It's brand new to Alderman Salus, being in District Five, Alderman Peccoralli. So we weren't hiding anything from the public or not having any meetings, just I haven't seen this at all. I've had a few phone calls with Ian, but, so we, there was no meeting, there is, it would have a meeting on what? We didn't have anything to show until just now. As far as the commercial use, it's just that two-and-a-half-acre piece?
It's the two-and-a-half acres plus the eight, call it eight to ten thousand that's integrated into one of the mixed-use buildings. So in total, it'd be the two-and-a-half acres, however much we could get on that, whatever made sense, plus the eight to ten thousand in the mixed-use building.
If this is not appropriate for me to ask, don't feel you need to answer the question. However, would you be open to, if the right buyer came along, to be selling that commercial space?
Yeah, so, so it's not inappropriate for you to ask. I think that the short answer here is, we have a lot of flexibility about how to execute that commercial space. If, if a group showed up today and said, hey, Ian, we have an idea for a use here, we really like it, but we, we just want to buy it, we don't want Land by Label involved in it, we can do that transaction. So likewise, if a group came to us and said, hey, we don't have the capital to pay to build our own building, but we really like it, so we'd like to lease space, we have the ability to, to make that transaction, too. I think from our standpoint, the number one thing is, the, everything behind the commercial piece is a, is, you know, it's still a ninety-two, ninety-three million dollar investment on our part, and, and of that, there's probably going to be twenty-five to thirty million of equity, a large part of which will come from Land by Label principles. And so I do have a sensitivity to, as I think the city does, about what the commercial is that goes on there. So long-winded way of saying, if somebody showed up and said, hey, Ian, we'll pay you a great price for that two-and-a-half acres, and we're going to build the most spectacular fireworks store you've ever seen, I'm probably not that interested in having, there's certain uses I think I just don't feel appropriate next to the other part of the development.
In that two-and-a-half acres and the other space, that's not including Harry's Hardware staying, correct?
That's correct. Harry's is about sixteen thousand square feet.
We get asked this question a lot from residents, how is that going to work with Harry's staying? Are they staying in that end of that building where they are now? Because you said you were going to re-face lift it. So then, when this time, comes time for demolition, everything, that whole side of that building's going to be cut down up to Harry's?
Yeah.
Harry's is going to, I just can't picture, I watched it go up, it was a very young girl, I should throw on the mirror, quite a bit older then, but I do, I remember when that was all, that's when it was built. So I just can't picture like, all of a sudden, you're just going to cut that building off at where Harry's is, or how that works.
It, it is a bit of a trick, so they, it won't be like a big gaping hole in the side of the building. I mean, it's a concrete block building, so it's solid. They call it healing the building. So you actually, you know, we've had a building inspector tour it with, give us some ideas about what we need to do, and we have, we've included in our budget dollars to heal the building, as they say. Some of it is, some of those dollars are going to be spent just to make it structurally sound and make sure it doesn't fall over when we're doing the rest of the demo. To be fair, some of those dollars are meant to be spent on improving the facade of the Harry's building and some of their exterior stuff. So, you know, they keep some of their outdoor stuff in a chain, behind chain link facing Seventy Sixth Street. We'd like to figure out a way to maybe pull some of that off of Seventy Sixth Street, still give them the outside display area, but maybe not have the chain link fence be the first thing you see when you drive into the, to the site, because that intersection will be signalized, and it is kind of the front door for the whole development. So we think it's important to spend a little money to, to improve the, the outside of the Harry's building.
It, I guess it just surprises me, not having the, the knowledge that you do, that it wouldn't just be less expensive just to demolish that building and start over with a, a fresh, new hardware store, still Harry's, of course, but versus all that work going into preserving it.
It's a fair bit cheaper to reuse the building if we can. So, so, you know, if we, if we add, tear it, build it new, I mean, the cost per square foot's probably, probably more than double what it would be to just spend some money to clean it up. You know, they've, what Harry's has shared is, is they'd like to extend their lease for a long term, and if they're willing to do that, we'd be comfortable investing the money to take care of the building, replace all the mechanicals, the roof, do all the exterior cleanup stuff on it. So, so it just feels like we have a user. We heard a lot about how important Harry's is from a lot of people, the Harry's folks want to stay, and so we were just looking for what's the best way to clean it up, make it look nice with the rest of the project, but manage to a rent level that, that, you know, isn't just painful in a new building.
So they then wouldn't be looking to increase their square footage storewide?
No, they're, they're happy with what they have.
That they are now.
Yep.
And then I'll turn, I'll yield into some moments, so others get the chance to talk, but will we, as a city, have a commitment to what's going in that commercial space before council were to agree to this project or the apartment buildings? Because you and I have had this discussion.
Yep.
This is an incredible, we have one chance and one chance only to do this right. The mayor's also the same thing many times. It's the first thing you see when you, you know, come into, enter into our city. So I just want to make sure that this is all put together versus piecemeal of, this restaurant may come in here down the road versus not, and so forth.
Yeah, so the short answer is, is yes. I think what we're looking for and what we've been working with the staff and S.B. Freeman on, and happy to have a conversation with, with anybody about it now, is what's the best way to make sure Land by Label's interests are aligned with the city's interest? I have no interest in seeing this sit vacant. I mean, I'm just hesitating because there's some dollar signs here that I'd rather not share in, in public, but fundamentally, we're committed to developing it as commercial as long as it's good commercial. Like I say, I think we all have an interest in getting the right type of commercial there. If that means that we have to sell it because somebody has a better idea than we do, Alderman Sliess had an idea for a, a public market kind of thing at some format. So, so, and look, I was the first one when he said it to say, they're cool, but that's not our skill set. And so if there's another developer that has that skill set, we'll be the first ones to sign it up and sell it to them. We do, we do have money in that land, and it would be nice to get some of that back. So that's kind of the contours of it. You know, in terms of how do we get better alignment with the city, I think that, like I said, there's lots of reasons to think we are aligned already, just because of the ninety-two million dollar investment next door, the fact that the right commercial makes that better, the fact that we do have, without getting into the specific dollar signs, the, the land price that's been allocated for the mixed-use and the apartment project is a fair, is, is less than the cost to buy the entire site. So, so we're looking at this commercial land, along with the Harry's, as a way to try to get back to par on that land price. So, so I'm highly motivated to find a user to come do it. Again, I appreciate it, it's got to be the right user. We've talked about other different techniques beyond just that, to make sure the city's comfortable that we're aligned. Some of them are a little crazy that we brainstorm with each other, some I think are actually pretty practical solutions. So just to give you a sense of the range of it, one idea we threw out was, we'll sell it to the city. If, if, if that's important to the city, that that be executed, I, I still think we're a highly qualified group to do that. If the city didn't feel that way, I understand, it's important to us, too, so we'd sell it. A variation on that theme could be, give us some time, a reasonable amount of time to try to get something that we all like, and if we can't execute it, we'll, we'll give it to the city for a dollar. And then, and then you can find somebody that, that's better at it than we are if we fail on it. That's a pretty draconian approach, but, but I might be willing to do it because I, I do think it'll be a focus of ours and we can get it done, but the devil will be in the details in terms of how long you would give us to work on it. I suppose you could negotiate the one-dollar purchase price with me if you'd like, but I don't have a lot of latitude on that. Yeah.
And as far as reducing the buildings on the outer edges into two stories for the residing neighbors, I think that that's an excellent compromise. I encourage those who are not happy with that to take a drive through my district, District Two, and drive through the Stonehedge Development off of Ninety Second and Wolfville, and drive back there and see exactly how close these multimillion-dollar mansions are to Velo Village Apartments. I think you'll be quite shocked. So that's just one good point to make, that I think bringing down the level on the outer edges is a positive for our community.
And the two-story stacked flat would actually be lower than Velo Village.
Right, right, and that's why I'm saying, is, you know, compared to Velo.
Could you say that again, sir?
The stacked flat, Velo Village, I did that deal, that's a three-story building with parking underground. The two-story stacked flat that we're talking about here is a two-story building. I think it's got more traditional architecture, so probably a gabled roof, just like some, a lot of the houses in Stonehedge would have. So it'd be, be, call it twelve feet lower than what you would see at Velo, full story lower.
My last question for now is, has there been a recent traffic analysis study done on this property and how this is going to affect traffic in that area?
Yeah, so we, we did a traffic study that was approved by the county for all the access points and required traffic improvements in December when we went through that original entitlement. So we have an approved traffic study. The only, there, there's two questions here. One, does the reduction in number of units change the amount of improvements that the county would require or the city would require us to make? The issue there is, without trying to get too wonky, anytime you get a traffic signal, you have, you guys know this, you have to meet warrants, and the warrants are just, it's like a formula that the DOT promulgates and the county adopts, and if you meet those traffic warrants, as they call them, you get a signal. If you fall below that, you don't get a signal. And so I think signals are expensive, but, but it does feel like the right thing to do here from just my sort of non-traffic engineer gut, is that a signal there would be the safest way to have a full movement access point. So we have to check that down, and if this moves forward, that would be one of the first things we do. The other question would be, is there a need for additional access points on the Seventy Sixth from the commercial parcel? So if that were the case, that might prompt another traffic study requirement with the county. Again, I'm not saying it's insurmountable, it's a little more money, but, but look, if, if there was an idea that came along, whether it was Land by Label or some developer we sold it to that we all liked, I would say traffic study won't be a, it wouldn't be a big bite, it's just kind of supplementing the work that's already been done. So.
I find that it would be difficult working with, many residents may not realize, well, I know many residents don't know this, Seventy Sixth Street is a state-county road, and Rossin BB is a county road. So working with the state and the county has nothing to do with how the city of Franklin feels if they need a stoplight there or not need a stoplight there, so I just wanted to stress that for those listening.
Yep, understood.
And I will, at this time, yield. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Alderman Salus? Thank you, Mr. Martin, for taking the time to come here tonight. I just want to, just to reflect my communication with the residents, because it's in my district and I get phone calls. People in the area, you know, to be frank with you, they do not have an appetite for apartment buildings. Apartment buildings to the residents means put a stress on the police force, put a stress on the fire department, put a stress on the school system, and at the end of the day, that means more tax, more liability on the, you know, on the shoulders of the taxpayers, especially the single-family homeowners. What we need in the city, we need meaningful commercial center, we need a place like to define the city of Franklin, something like to be a destination where people say, oh, let's, let's stop, you know, Seventy Sixth and Rossin, we'll call it later, but, so, absent of having meaningful commercial development, like the idea, okay, we could build the, the units, I know the unit could be built and easily, and, you know, it will be a successful development in your side, but from the eyes of the residents... But from the eyes of the residents and the taxpayers, so they did not get the missing component that we are missing in the city, which is a meaningful commercial development. So I, I feel it will be very difficult to sell the project to the residents unless we have a comprehensive look. What are we getting at the end of the day? Having a two and a half empty acres of land is not going to cut it for, for the, you know, folks living in, in the area. So we have to put our heads together. As much as I'm enthusiastic about the public market and you know that.
Right.
City of Brookfield is doing it now. I'm, I'm very sure you might be aware of that. It was in the newspaper. So, but it doesn't have to be the public market, but it, we have to, we have to define the, the commercial component of it. And we have, they have to move together. We have to have a commitment to this and the commitment to the, to the units at the same time to be able to sell. You know, I'll be holding a public, you know, meeting with the neighborhood, you know, very much to the east of the project. And they'll be, they'll be grilling me with this question, you know, what are we getting out of this other than the apartment? Like, you know, some people say, oh, you know, coming to the city of Franklin, seeing like a bunch of apartment buildings is not the, you know, the image that they are striving, although you have in a nice development and the nice, you know, images what has been presented here, but still the question remains.
Yeah. So, there's a lot there, so I'll try to just take it a little bites of it if I could. The, I've explained why I think, I think our interests are aligned with the cities. I've expressed willingness to be incredibly flexible to figure out ways that the city can make sure I'm focused on developing the commercial property. I think in one conversation, I even, I even came up with the idea that I'll sell it to the city for a dollar today if you give me the right to repurchase it if I find a user before you guys do. So, I mean, I've gone to some pretty great lengths to demonstrate and I'll, I'll sign the legal agreements when they're drafted. Beyond that, I think it's important to, to remember that we're talking about how to add commercial space to a failing commercial development. Right? I mean, the shopping center, it's a shopping center today that's, that's almost 100% vacant. Which is to say that, that, that the traditional suburban shopping center format that is the shopping center today doesn't work. The market has spoken, it doesn't work. So, so the question isn't, isn't do we want commercial, it's what's the right type of commercial that we can get to this site that people are excited about? It's one thing to say, frankly, whether it's a public market or, or my idea of this, this really cool brewery that's got all this great outdoor space, we can dream big about it, but ultimately the market's going to tell us what's possible. So then you say, okay, well, how do we, how do we encourage the market to bring the best possible development? Because you and I sitting here talking about public markets and, and awesome breweries and just hoping that happens isn't going to do it, right? So not to say we're not going to call, you know, every brewery we can think of and ask them if they might be interested. Of course, that's what we're going to do. I think the better approach is to say, how do we set this up to have the most possible flexibility, whether you're talking about site design or economics, to attract those type of users we want? So Alderman, I, I, Alderwoman Ikman, when she said, you know, well, if you, if somebody else just wanted to buy it from you, would you sell it? We have the ability to do that. We can just, if, if somebody showed up tomorrow and said, hey, we got a great idea, we all like it, we'll sell it to them tomorrow. I, I've said, hey, if, if they're capital constrained and they need a developer to build it for them and rent them, we can do that too. If a restaurant comes along, and, and it's always the restaurants, to be honest with you, because most of them are undercapitalized. And so they need to own their real estate in order to, you know this, to get debt on it to finance the business. That's really impossible. That's a very difficult thing to do when you have commercial space that's integrated in a mixed-use building. We're going to have, that's going to be a lease deal. But, what I like about having two and a half vacant acres of land is that if a restaurant group comes around, we can just sell them the land and they can go get their own mortgage for it. So, so again, I guess, long-winded way of saying, we can't create a market, but we can create the best possible conditions for that market. And I think we can also, if we get creative and, and stay practical, create some, call them incentives or whatever you want to make sure land by label is focused on achieving that outcome. The last comment I'll make about things like, like schools, we went through all of that stuff and I, I, I don't disagree at all that you'll hear them again in the neighborhood meeting. When I've gone through that process and on this project with those neighbors, reasonable minds, I guess, are just going to have to disagree on some of that. So when somebody says to me, oh, apartments are going to put a huge burden on schools, that's just fundamentally not true. And, and in fact Franklin did a study of Velo Village to determine that I think it's what, less than, I think it's less than three per hundred school-aged kids live in that project? Four? Okay, Alderman Craig's got good memory. I love it. But, but, so, okay, so you remember what I'm talking about. They did a study and, and they concluded that, that there, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a solution looking for a problem because apartments don't create burdens on schools. If we were talking about building 100 single-family homes, that would be a different thing. That does create a burden. And, and I can go through any number of those issues as we did, you know, stormwater. People will talk about how we have impervious coverage and that's going to create stormwater problems. That's fundamentally not true. Number one, legally, we can't do it, right? I can't create either more or faster discharge off the site post-development than existing condition. I'll get, I'll dare anybody to look at whatever site plan we have, whether it's the one that's approved today or the one I'd like to do and determine that there's more impervious coverage than is sitting out there today. So, so again, I appreciate what you're saying and I, I've been in those meetings too and I'll undoubtedly be in a lot more. But let's not just take for granted what they say as tru, as truth, because that's not always the case.
Yeah, I got a couple of things and I, I loved a lot of the stuff that you just said and it gives me a lot of springboards to work off of. When we talk first about the schools and yes, there would, Velo Village had a very minimal impact to Franklin Public Schools. That is a, that is a, that is a fact. That is not conjecture or any sort of guesses. It is a fact. It had very limited exposure to impact to the Franklin Public Schools as far as enrollment goes. However, there still is kids that go there, right? How would, based on where your site is, would you be able to coordinate with Franklin Public Schools for bus pickup and delivery of children without it being a nuisance to traffic in that area and/or your own customers or residents?
It's a good, great question and I don't have the answer for you. So when we advance the design, it's an issue we've got to solve for. And to be fair, the honest answer is I haven't solved it yet. Historically, we've looked at things like pull-off lanes by the front door or the clubhouse where all the residents would come in and out. That becomes the pickup point and then you just create kind of a, a loading zone that can accommodate a school bus. We generally do that for move-in purposes anyway. You got to think about somebody who's got like a full trailer that wants to move in, so that loading zone can usually serve a couple of purposes, whether it's, it's move-ins or a school bus. But, but I don't have it all figured out now.
And one of the other things to kind of go, kind of marry with that, with that concept is that it isn't apartments that drive enrollment into schools, but rather it's more the price point as far as that goes. And I'm not, and you even said it from the beginning, like, hey, I'm not here to kind of discuss the, what is or maybe or any of that sort of stuff. But, there are apartment complexes in my district that do have a great deal of those young families where they're starting out and they do have much more elementary-aged kids. So, you know, maybe it isn't apartments that drive that, but rather a price point that drives that, I think would be a, a much more fair statement to make on that. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, it, it's a good comment. I've not, I've not studied it in detail, but intuitively, I think that must be right. So what I could say here is, and actually the city hired S B Friedman to do their own review on all this stuff. But, the rent that I'm projecting for this project is at or above Velo Village. So I think you're right. There could be a correlation between school-aged kids and just price point. Especially for families thinking about, you know, one of the nice things about apartments, believe it or not, is that lots of times folks move in there while they're waiting for their house to be built down the street. And so those people, to be fair, I bet if you went back and you looked at the four per hundred at Velo, I'll bet they fit that description, almost all of them. So, so I think, I think you're right about the price point. That's, my gut tells me you're right. All I can offer is that we're, we're the same or a little bit higher than Velo. So I would think we have a somewhat similar school-age population.
Fair. One thing that, when we talk about the, as, as you talk about the commercial side, you looking for, as you say, the right type of commercial. And you talk about the flexibility in, in that regard. Do you have in your vision of what this will be, a mix of retail v, you know, food and drink?
Yeah.
Or is it a, if, if the right sort of retailers are, man, it's retail and it's retail and it works and it, it fits our demographic, it fits our customer base, would you go, is that something where, man, I'd love to rent you out this space, but I want to make sure that I have more food and drink options for my residence than I do, you know, a place to buy, you know, a really cool t-shirt?
Yeah, yeah, good question. So, so the way I would answer it is by saying, I, for me, and now I'm answering this as the, the owner, the potential owner of the commercial and the multifamily. So I'm thinking of it as, as I've got 312 units and this commercial space has the opportunity to either be a really attractive amenity or a, a non-event that's not particularly attractive to those people. Secondary to that is the, is the financial piece of it. I shared with you guys that, that if I don't extract any value from the commercial land, we're going to lose money because we paid too much for the land, frankly. So, so focusing on what, what's the right mix and the right type of retailers. Again, I don't think I can necessarily make a market. I can create the right conditions for it. And if I do that, what I'd love to end up with is two sit-down restaurants. One that's a little more family-friendly and maybe one that's a little higher-end. Both sit-down restaurants, but that would be the ideal mix for me. So let's say that's 10,000 square feet. Coffee shops are, are an amazing amenity for people. You know, it's just, I, I don't really go there, but I, I mean, everybody loves going to a coffee shop, turning on their laptop. Most of them these days have food sort of service as part of them, even if it's not a full kitchen. So, so I do like the idea of a coffee shop cafe as part of it. That probably isn't 5,000 square feet, you know, that's something a lot smaller. And then I think about that, and that's kind of where I think the food and beverage should be. What's not in that list for me is kind of your, trying to figure out the best way to describe it, like just your typical suburban outlaw drive-through. You know, we could probably go out there and find a, a drive-through fast food restaurant to do a deal. But I don't think that's additive to, you know, when people say, hey, we've got one chance to get this commercial right. I don't think anybody's saying, you know what we need here? Yeah, right. We don't need another Hardee's, right? That's not where we're going. Not to be critical of Hardee's, but that's just, I don't view this as the right spot for it. So, so then when you go to the retail piece of it, I think of it as, what are those sort of groups out there, whether it's commercial or retail, that are really appealing? And so, you know, the fitness thing is big now, right? So fitness studios, I think, are a great idea. Sometimes it's just really high-end personalized training attention. I think the sort of orange theory things are great. So, and there's all kinds of like yoga studios, right? The list goes on and on, but that would be one category that I would pursue pretty hard for the commercial space. I think there's a good opportunity for, call it small local office, right? So local law firm, local dentist office, something like that. That doesn't really light me up like the other uses do, but I wouldn't take it off the table if, if we had a good. You know, these are things that everybody needs from time to time, so having them, if they're wrapped in the right architecture, can be a pretty nice use. So that's kind of how I think about, in a perfect world, how all this would play out.
Would there be, when you talk about your flexibility and your agility to different thought processes with this, how much would that be as far as, I mean, from food and beverage to retail to office? How, how flexible would you be as far as that goes?
I think I have a.
As far as the build goes, not, not to who, but rather how you'd be able to accommodate?
So, so I think we're locked into a restaurant in the mixed-use space, right? So that building that's got the eight to 10,000 square feet in it, that's going to have a restaurant in it. It's the right spot for it. It's a really attractive amenity. So I would have a hard time pivoting out of restaurants altogether. So, so I think in terms of identifying where I don't have a lot of flexibility, I kind of feel like, like I definitely were going to have at least one restaurant. I really love this wine bar idea. I know the guys that own it and operate it. They know what they're doing. Been around for a long time. And I, again, that kind of falls into the coffee shop category. It's like a cafe that people can go and enjoy and then, and it contributes to the, the bigger effort. You know, the things that, that would be, would be kind of tough decisions, right? Would be, you know, let's say, let's say a local, let's say a medical use showed up and wanted a 30,000 square foot office building. You know, we, would we be willing to pivot out of 100% of what we had in mind on that two and a half acres to accommodate a really nice, you know, medical office building? I guess my answer would be maybe. Depends on what it looks like, depends on what kind of medical it is. And then of course it depends on, on, we, we've got to come back to the city with the design, right? So the architecture, the site design, the parking, all that stuff would have to get vetted. But I think, I think that's the sort of pivot that, you know, would we make that? Maybe.
Okay. My last thing is, when you talk about the ability to, you know, you're, you're not removing anything off the table. And if the right client comes along, your, and the right circumstances line up, the ability to sell is not disqualified.
Right.
But then there are some that you can't based on the wear.
Yeah.
So is that a, also an item where you would say, you know, I can't sell you the building because it's the mixed-use? But are you willing to part with equity within the building for someone that's looking to have long-term, you know, anchor and roots in the, in the community?
Yep.
But because it's not your traditional sort of, you know, five-by-five or whatever?
Right. The answer is yes. I mean, so, so I'll share with you that one of the groups that has expressed an interest is, you know, they're, they're really seasoned restaurant professionals. They run other restaurants. They're local people. I like their concept. It would fit that more family-friendly, but still full-service sit-down sort of concept. Their capital constrained is the nicest way to say it. So.
They're not liquid.
Right. So when we talk to them, the conversations pretty quickly turn to things like, well, how much tenant improvement allowance can we give you? And if you, you look at the underwriting that we've, we've shared with the. And if you you look at the underwriting that we've we've shared with the city, we have a pretty healthy tenant improvement allowance. So we make that capital, we take some of that capital pressure off them. The other thing we've done is is not made any big expectations about what the rental rate will be for that space. So if you were to go out to the corners and think about some of the restaurants there, I mean, I don't know this to be true, but I bet they're paying $35 to $45 a foot. I'm looking at at our space saying, and that, and plus triple nets. And I'm saying, you know, I'd like to get around 13 to 14 if we could. So so I'm already trying to set it up such that it's an approachable deal. But even with that, there's no doubt that somebody's going to come along, and we we have this discussion going on, another project we're building, where they say, you know what? What about percentage rent? What if, what if we just say, hey, if it goes well, we'll pay you X? If it doesn't go well, you don't, you don't get paid. And we haven't ruled that out, and I wouldn't rule it out here. It's really about, if you if you like the group that you're doing, would we become partners with them? Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, well, actually, yes.
You got the floor, sir.
Can you bring up the the diagram again real quick? Or the the picture of the units? I just want to get a, you talked about the ones on the outside being two-story, and then the others. I just want to get a visual again of, you talked about it, but.
Here? Oh, got it. You want the site plan?
Yeah, so so the ones, yeah, if you could just highlight which ones are the, the two or the four?
No, you don't. Mr. Precherelli, do you want the pointer?
Wow. That's an honor.
Please pass it on, Mr. Precherelli.
I don't know how you could say no to that.
So are the I'll try not to. Looking how it works.
Was pointing towards you.
I'm pointing it towards me. I'm pointing at me. That's not really going to work. All right, so this building here, that's four-story?
Yes.
And this building here is a four-story?
Yeah, the A and B buildings are four stories. So so at the gra, at the grade level, that is the retail or commercial space and the parking to service the building.
Okay. And then the rest of the buildings, are those all two-story?
Those are all two stories around the perimeter, except for building K and J, and those would be townhomes.
The this and this?
That's right.
And those, and so, being townhomes, how tall are those?
Those could be two-and-a-half stories.
Okay, all right.
Not not a full three-story building, but two-and-a-half. And and the only reason I say that is, the way they get designed lots of times is you you drop that that bottom grade, you've seen this sort of halfway down, and then you have stoops that go up to the front door, and then you have tuck-under parking behind it. That's a really efficient way to do it. So that could be what we end up with here. I like that because I don't like garage doors that face the street. I think it it looks nicer to have your front door and a stoop, especially when you're 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 across from other multifamily buildings. I think it's just a nicer design.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
That's all I have, right? Let's kind of come back this way. Before we go any further in this meeting. Nope. Thank you. So as long as it's secure right there. So my question to you now, Mr. Martin, is, okay, and I'm going to ask, sir, if after we break, if you could simply ask Mr. Martin on your own, you have a height question that we can't, please do it. Please do it, because that way we can get to some, you know, finality. Okay, so one of the things, if we can go back to that drawing that was just up there, please? Okay, now, so when this was 15 years ago, 18 years ago, when it was fully operational, the Sentry Store, everything was rented, everything was kicking, did the state or the county, and I don't know if you know this, require a, if they didn't require a traffic light then, my concern is they're not going to require a traffic, because we need one there. We need one there desperately on 76th Street that there should have been a traffic light there decades ago.
And that that's what's required in the traffic study. So in other words, we couldn't get a permit to create the access point on 76th if we didn't signalize it.
Okay, and that was with the reduction in apartments, the 312 apartment units?
I I still have to check that down.
Yeah, because that's that's a concern, because we need it desperately. And that's, in my opinion, obviously, it's a novice, it's not a traffic expert or anything, but yeah, we need it, safety reasons. Now, when we're talking about the the neighbors to the south, you know, that are going to have a direct impact with this and how this development rolls through. So just so we know, A, those are two-story buildings on the bottom on the south end?
Yeah.
And I'm going to cautiously use my pointer or judgment from the Director of Administration. So we got two, you know, double stories there, that's it. Big deal, it's a big change. And Harry's committing, and I know that I know some of the particulars, but that's a long-term commitment with an option. That's huge. And I think that you, there was the former former mayor that came and spoke about some added water issue, which now you told that was completely false, debunked. You cannot create any more water issues, so that whole concern, I'll say it mildly, is is not to be addressed any longer. It's 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 been addressed, so it's not a concern.
Yep. And and the city, and the the staff at the city will have an opportunity to review the final plans on that stormwater management before you give us a permit.
Okay, so I guess, you know, this is now the the die-hard citizens, neighbors that showed up here and stayed for this. You know what we know. Okay, this is, there's no other secret plan that we said, wink, hey, just wait till we go into closed session, and now it's going to be a Marshals for her, because she wants a Marshals, you know, you know, whatever. I just, so so now where we're at is where we're at. I mean, there's, this is the latest, greatest. Now, my concern, you know, I'd like to see this thing bulldoze tomorrow and just be gone into oblivion in a nice, flat, buildable space. If things work out, it's still favorable that it's going to be taken down this year.
Yeah, we would like to tear it down this year, without getting into all the wonky details, although if Danielle wants to, I'm happy to go along with it. The financial modeling that we've all built on this project depends on it being torn down this year.
Good. So that's a big motivator to those that are out there, the five of you, that this is a big, the big motivator that are here, plus everyone's listening. The big motivation is to get this place gone this year, bulldoze, rock it and rolling, and then get something that's going to start, you know, bringing forth our city. And, you know, when you, I just, you know, I'm very excited. I mean, we're all excited to have something great go there, no question about it. And I just, thank you. So if there's no one's got anything further, why don't we just, we'll we'll move this soon, because we can go into closed session. Anything further on G-12? Nothing? Thank you. So now we're going to go to G-13. And I will read the bottom part with my spectacles. A motion in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub one semi for market competition and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms relating to potential residential slash commercial developments and proposals and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto, and to effect such developments, including the terms and provisions of potential development agreements for properties in the southeast corner, area of South 76th Street and West Rossin Avenue. Such potential developments to be named post-general and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to go into closed.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Economic Development.
The trade secrets and confidential information entailed is financial modeling and specific target markets.
I'm I'm sorry, could you say that a little louder, please? It's right in there.
We got it here?
Now you're good.
The information that is confidential is financial modeling and specific target markets and and prospects.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. City Attorney.
Further clarification, he's stating that with regard to a court of appeals case earlier this year, I believe the name was Oitzinger versus Marinette. And with regard to the closed session, this is for bargaining with the developer. However, I've been informed that the developer will be inside because of what the Economic Development Director entitled "preyed secret financial information" that should be considered by the common counsel before it deliberates on the subject matter, and the developer would not otherwise disclose that financial information in public. And everybody's nodding their head, including the Economic Development Director and the developer. So that's stated on the record now as for consideration in going into closed session, but the developer will leave the closed session prior to deliberation by the common counsel on negotiating any potential agreement.
Well stated. We've got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Peccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes. Close. All right, it's 11:51 PM. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present us with a motion?
A motion to direct staff to proceed with the preparation of a potential counteroffer and to consult with the city financial consultants with regard to same and thereafter to deliver to the developer if vetted by financial consultants.
Is that your complete motion, sir?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Long enough to repeat it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
And vetted means no, no direction to not deliver it from financial consultant.
That does not change the motion.
I know.
Good. G-14. A motion in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub one, sub G, took it forward with legal counsel for the common counsel is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the city of Franklin versus BPC Master Developer LLC and Michael Zimmerman, Milwaukee County Circuit Court, case number 24C Charles E. Victor dash 7479. Litigation and/or possible litigation related to the 2024 shortfall payment under the TID 5 development agreement and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as deemed appropriate. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Peccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye. Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries.
It is 12:23 AM on July 2nd. We are back in open session. Counselor, would you please state a recommended motion?
Direct counsel to proceed as discussed in closed.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. All right, under Hs and Henry licenses, who is doing licenses?
I'll do it.
Unless you want me to, it doesn't matter.
Well, looks like Alderman Craig is taking that leadership role. Alderman, you've got the floor?
Thank you, sir.
After a deferment from your partner?
We met this earlier this evening, or earlier last evening, and went through all the applications. There were two extraordinary entertainment and special event licenses. Were both recommended for approval. The temporary entertainment and amusement license was requested to have a decibel limit increased, and that was, is also being recommended for approval. Moving on to operators. Jennifer Barlow needs to correct her application. Once she does that, then that will be moved to recommendation for approval. All other applicants on page 182 are are recommended for approval. On page 183, Diana Kleist and Stanley Rankle both need to correct their application, but all other operators on that page will be recommended for approval. And every single operator on the last page will be recommended for approval with no need to correct any application. Sir.
So what was the decibel limit?
79.
79?
Up to
Up to
Up to Up to 79 at the property line.
Not encouraged to go.
And the applicant did provide a telephone number that if there were complaints from neighbors, that she can be reached in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Those are the recommendations, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman? Aye.
Alderman Peccarelli?
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries. Going to vouchers and payroll approval. There are three points. This will also be a roll call. Motion proving the following. Point one, city vouchers within any date of June 26, 2025, in amount of $1,973,552.67. Point two, payroll dated June 27, 2025, in the amount of $473,832.52, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $663,474.58, plus city matching payments. And point three, estimated payroll dated July 11, 2025, in the amount of $484,000, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $270,000, plus city matching payments. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
First and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Peccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn at 12:27 AM.
I'll second.